Grateful for the partnership and, you know, CBOs, our police department was there as well. So it was a wonderful event and very grateful for all the hands that took for it to be a success. I also just wanted to lift up, although on St. Patrick's Day I didn't do, I wasn't even wearing green, my goodness, but attended an event at Getty House, which was dedicated to breaking barriers and building bridges. It's called "The Journey to Shatter the Glass Ceiling" in honor of Women's History Month. So I'm very grateful to Mayor Bass and the board there at the Getty House for supporting women and, you know, supporting pipelines into leadership there. So it was an honor to be there. I want to just flag for neighbors that tomorrow is the first Courageous Conversations that the city is hosting. It's going to be in the Vets Memorial Building from 7:00 to 9:30 p.m. I'll be a little late because I'll be coming from another event, but really looking forward to the conversation and very grateful to staff and the Equity and Human Relations Committee for doing the hard work of making that conversation happen. Also, just want to lift up, March is also Disability Awareness Month, so just wanted to lift up that awareness and support the voices of folks with disabilities and advocate for a more inclusive society. It says, "Together, we will break down barriers and create a more accessible world for everyone." And I believe that we feel that from this dais. Last two, just want to acknowledge that Persian New Year, I believe, will be celebrated tomorrow. So for our neighbors that are celebrating that, wishing folks a very happy new year. And last but not least, a shout out to our Culver City Bus folks. It is Transit Operator Appreciation Day, so I just wanted to flag that as well. So that's it for me. Staff, do you have any updates, announcements, or any boards, committees, or commissions providing any updates this evening?
We have nothing.
Wonderful. So now, we will journey on to presentations. So it looks like we'll have a presentation from our Culver City Fire Chief, Powell, regarding accreditation-related documents and Insurance Service Office ISO class rating. Thanks so much for joining us.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council members. My name is Ken Powell. I'm the Fire Chief. This evening, I'd like to briefly update the council and the community on the completion of a few significant fire department documents and achievements. Currently, the fire department is in the process of re-accreditation with the Center on Fire Accreditation, excuse me, the Commission on Fire Accreditation International. It is a process that we go through every five years. If successful, this will be our sixth time being accredited. The process includes the development of required documents, which include a self-assessment manual document, community risk assessment and standards-of-cover document, and a strategic plan document, as well as a peer review of those documents, a site visit by the peer review team, and a hearing in front of the Commission on Fire Accreditation International. The department has also completed the required documents for the Insurance Service Office, or ISO, and has received its new ISO rating. Our 2024-29 Strategic Plan has been completed. This is a community-driven strategic plan. The process to develop this document included four full days of meetings with both external and internal stakeholders. Our external stakeholders included a diverse group of 23 community members who engaged in conversations on identifying, from a community perspective, things the agency should and should not change, identifying the community's expectations for the agency, concerns about or for the agency, and aspects of the community views as strengths and positives, and establishing the community's prioritized view of the programs and services provided by the agency. Our internal stakeholder, or, excuse me, our internal stakeholders included 26 members of the fire department. Their work included identifying the agency's strengths, opportunities, aspirations, and results, revisiting our mission statement and core values, identifying the agency's challenges and service gaps, determining strategic initiatives for organizational improvement, and the development of strategic goals and objectives with relative timelines focusing on outcomes. Our 2024 Community Risk Assessment and Standards-of-Cover Document is complete. The intention of this document is to do the following: Conduct a complete community risk assessment, including all relevant fire and non-fire risks, and document findings. Create goals and objectives for each of the department's divisions, programs. Utilize these findings to develop objectives within the emergency response program while focusing on a desired and intended outcomes. Create a standards-of-cover document with benchmarks based upon the community risk assessment and the corresponding goals and objectives. And study the agency's performance based upon the benchmarks established within the SOC and identify any performance gaps based on each risk class and category. The core purpose of the Community Risk Assessment and Standards-of-Cover is to ensure a safe and effective response force for fire suppression, emergency medical services, and specialty response situations. This report serves as the following: One, the basis for continually measuring service level performance; Two, a predictive tool for helping to determine the workload and ideal unit utilization; Three, a management tool for determining apparatus type and staffing levels; Four, a descriptive tool for validating service levels; and Five, a baseline tool for defining service level objectives. The Community Risk Assessment and Standards-of-Covered is organized into four major sections: Area Characteristics, Programs and Services, All-Hazard Community Risk Assessment, and Deployment and Performance. Next slide, please. Last year, the fire department completed and submitted to the Insurance Service Office, or ISO, all necessary documents for its review and new rating. I am happy and proud to inform you that the Culver City Fire Department was awarded a Class 1 ISO rating effective May 1st of 2024. ISO is a nationwide rating service used by insurance companies to help establish insurance rates for local businesses and residential properties. As fire insurance premiums are based on the quality of service and fire protection available, Culver City's Class 1 rating means that Culver City homeowners and businesses have the potential to get lower fire insurance premiums. An ISO rating is a score from 1 to 10 that indicates how well-protected your community is by the fire department. Class 1 represents preliminary fire protection services, and Class 10 indicates that the area's fire suppression program does not meet ISO minimum criteria. Out of over 38,000 agencies surveyed in the United States, only 498 hold a Class 1 rating. Just 45 out of 862 rated agencies in the state of California have the Class 1 distinction. Culver City has maintained the Class 1 rating since 1995. Both our Strategic Plan and Community Risk Assessment Standards-of-Cover documents can be found on our fire department website. I thank you for your time, and I'm open to any questions you may have.
Thank you, Chief. Presentation looks great. And my only question was, where can we find these slides? And you gave that right at the end, so thank you so much. I'm going to pass it around to colleagues. Councilmember Erickson.
Great news, but I wouldn't expect anything less of your department and your leadership. So thank you. I ask you a question. What is the status of our surrounding fire departments? L.A., Beverly Hills, Santa Monica, the one that we sort of work with when we go on strike force and so on?
As far as the documents I was speaking of, a lot of them don't initiate into the accreditation process. It's a very long and strenuous process, especially for the larger departments. It's very hard to put that all together. They all go through the ISO rating process. I believe Beverly Hills and Santa Monica are both Class 1 rated. L.A., I'm not sure they say they're Class 1, but I don't know if that's actually true.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for keeping quality of our fire department. Thank you.
Councilmember Pusa.
Thanks, Mayor. Congrats on maintaining the Class 1 status, and thank you for your leadership and to all of your team members. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Vera.
Thank you. No questions, Chief, but thank you so much for all the hard work and all the people involved in creating a Class 1 fire department. So much appreciated, sir.
Thank you. I'll pass that on.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor O'Brien.
Same. Great job. I just did the math. You guys are around the top 1.2% in the country in the Class 1 rating. So it's fantastic and another feather in our cap. So thanks so much, Chief.
Thank you.
No notes. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, let's continue with the order of our agenda and two joint public comment items that are on the agenda. City Clerk, how many comments do we have right now?
Eight.
Wonderful. Let's do three minutes then.
Okay, I'm going to read the list. If you're online logged in as user, call-in user needs to identify yourself so we know whether or not you are on the speaker list. Emily Sarwinski, Eileen Chen, Mary DeValle, Melissa Stecky, Marcy Bond, Daniella V., Maria Correio, and James Richardson. So we'll start with Emily Sarwinski. There's an Emily Baldwin online. If I unmute Emily Baldwin, Emily, is this, are you the same person, Sarwinski?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Emily Sarwinski, maiden name Baldwin, so still some changes there. But hello, everybody. Thank you guys all so much for sharing a bit of time with us tonight and putting me into your agenda. I oversee our culinary events and partnerships here in California in support of No Kid Hungry. You guys have been longtime partners of ours with our Taste of the Nation event, which takes place in Culver City at Media Park. I know many of you are familiar with us from the 33 about years running that we've had Taste of the Nation, and I think maybe 16 almost, maybe even 17 years that it's been held there at Media Park. But just for anyone new, or a refresher for anyone, I just wanted to give a little overview of No Kid Hungry and what we do and what you guys have been a part of for so many years. No Kid Hungry is the only national campaign that's dedicated entirely to ending childhood hunger here in the United States. Our goal and our promise is to make sure that every kid gets three meals every day all year. We are kind of unique in that we are really working from the perspective that it takes more than food to solve hunger. We're not just working to feed kids today, but we're really working to end hunger so that these kids and families are not faced with food insecurity today, tomorrow, or ever. We really focus on helping schools and communities create and improve meal programs for kids and providing them with grant funding that helps them really just kind of get what they need to scale and see those meal programs really reach the participation levels that we know is reflected in the need in the area. And then we also have a large part of our organization that's really just dedicated toward fighting for laws and policies that help families feed their children. So that's really how we see sustainable transformative change happening, things like expanding and modernizing programs like SNAP, WIC, that are putting resources in families' pockets. So while we're a national campaign, we're really working with, you know, local schools, nonprofits, government agencies in all 50 states to really make sure that kids have access to the meals that they need. This year, 1 in 5 kids are facing hunger, and so this is just another great example of a way that we are raising awareness and raising funds to help support our work. Taste of the Nation events are really our signature public-facing event that really does this and highlights the amazing culinary community and industry that is there in Los Angeles. 100% of the proceeds go to No Kid Hungry, and since its inception, which was 1988, it's raised more than $100 million to help combat hunger. So we're really excited to be bringing this event back to L.A. again this year.
Thank you. Your time's up.
Okay. Okay, thank you for the heads up. We typically submit a grant request in the spring, and somehow between being out on maternity leave and all the things, that notification never reached me. So I'm here tonight just to kindly request your guys' support for grant sponsorship again this year at the May 4th event at a future meeting. Thank you.
Okay, our next.
And City Clerk, do you mind sharing just the statement? I forgot to have a reminder. Thank you.
Multitasking.
Always. All good.
I do just want to read the statement regarding hate speech. Members of the public have a right to speak on matters that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. However, this council strongly denounces hate speech and does not tolerate disruptive behavior in our meetings. Culver City prides itself on its diverse community and inclusion of all peoples, persons, and we are committed to creating a safe space in the city and in these chambers where members of our community feel included and respected.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Mary DeValle, followed by Jay Garicache. Sorry. Melissa Stecky will follow Mary DeValle.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council. I'd like to talk a moment about AB 1909. As of January 1st, 2023, motor vehicle drivers in California must move over one lane when passing bicyclists instead of only keeping a distance of 3 feet. This is the law now under Assembly B 1909, which was signed by Governor Newsom in September 2022. So let's look at how this actually works in real life in Culver City. Sepulveda Boulevard is a perfect example of where drivers hopefully would follow this law and move over a lane. Sepulveda is designated as a share-o, which means you may encounter cyclists in the right-hand lane, and they are allowed to take the full lane since there is no bike lane provided. Therefore, as a driver, you must change lanes, move into the lane to your left when it is safe to do so if you wish to pass the cyclist. What about Lucerne? It's also a share-o, but since there is no additional lane to the left, the motorist must wait until there is a brake in oncoming traffic and go around the cyclist with 3 feet of clearance. We find a different situation on Overland between Bayona Creek and Culver Boulevard where there is a Class 2 bike lane. When the cyclist is in that bike lane, they are fully in the door zone due to the cars parked on their right, which puts them at risk of being gravely injured by the impact of the door opening and by being knocked into a lane of fast-moving traffic. Additionally, on the cyclist's left, there are two very fast-moving lanes of traffic. The adjacent lane, that is, the lane adjacent to the cyclist, pass the cyclist at far less than 3 feet. Larger vehicles such as trucks and SUVs present even more of an issue because they pass even closer to the cyclist since they take up more of the lane space. Giving room to bicyclists is not just a courtesy. It is now the law.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Melissa Stecky, followed by Marcy Bond. Melissa's online. I've unmuted you, Melissa. Go ahead.
This city has become infiltrated with progressives mostly who come from outside of Culver City who want to continue to ruin our small town. I'm unabashedly going to stand up for my children and all others to the corruption that is occurring here and being voted on by the city council. Where's the transparency in changing city policies by hiding them in agendas that aren't written as such policy changes and then not addressing the vote till over 5 hours into your meeting? It's become obvious none of you actually care about the safety of your constituents. You proved that twice last week in voting against the people whose health will be absolutely affected by the 5G radiation right next to their windows and housing. How about all of you ask that company to put a 5G cell tower right next to your window where you sleep? You also proved it when you passed a change in the way a person can enter a public restroom, shower, or locker room by allowing them to use that space with their choice, with whatever gender they feel like identifying with. Instead of spending money on adding a particular bathroom or safe changing space for someone who identifies differently than their biological sex, you're going to allow someone to enter someone else's safe space, even if they're not the same biological sex. You've been sucked into these tenuous and divisive agendas so you can get money and votes in your pocket. The sport is disgusting, and the city is self-destructing. The safety of all humans is currently at stake here in Culver City, and not one of you honestly give a damn. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Marcy Bond. Marcy, I've unmuted you. Go ahead.
Hey, Council. I can say, well, first, let me tell you a story. A few months ago, I was at the El Segundo Weisburn Aquatic Center. And when I was speaking to a friend who actually I swim with all the time, and she was talking about how she was in there showering when a man came in, and he was also, he decided he was going to shower in there with them. Later, another woman came in. There were no women doing anything about this because they didn't know what to do. Another woman came in who is a friend of mine, and she whipped open the shower curtain and said, "What the hell are you doing in here?" as he was filling himself up. 1 in 4 women in the United States have been raped, fully raped. Or, yes, 1 in 4. 1 in 3 have been sexually harassed. I'm not worried about the people who are transgender. I don't think that they are going to do anything to anybody else. I'm concerned about the pedophiles and the sexual predators who will take advantage of these rules. If you, you've been probably, most of you are men, I don't know how many of you have ever been intimidated by another man physically, as if they are going, or another person physically, as if they are going to do something to you sexually that you don't want to have done. I'm not saying men haven't had that happen, but I'm saying the vast majority of women have. And it's very frightening. And our safe spaces as women are disappearing. And I think that this is, I find this appalling that this is happening. I myself have been sexually assaulted 4 times. I physically had to throw 2 men off of me. I was able to do it. Not every woman can. So I am having a really hard time with this decision. I would, I think that we should be building a separate room for them to feel safe. But don't invade our safe spaces, please. This is completely unacceptable. I don't know how many women are going to be struggling now to use that locker room, to use the bathrooms, because they have experienced much worse than I ever have. Please rethink this. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Daniella V. Is she here? Because she's not online. So we will move on to Maria Correio. And I believe, Maria, I've unmuted you. Go ahead. Maria?
Hello?
Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Thank you. So yes, I'm calling on the same anonymously motion that was passed for revising the restrooms in parks, public buildings, and properties. As you guys in position of making decisions for the community, I feel this is very absurd that you guys will bow on something without bringing in the community, the whole community, to get their perspective on this. With this overuse of the term inclusion and diversity, I think as adults that have common sense, we're missing the mark in protecting children in these kind of spaces, and especially the young ones, our girls and our boys. I would want you guys to reconsider this and take into consideration the women. I mean, it's kind of ridiculous that we celebrate, you know, Mayor, the month of women, and we don't even know what women is, as we are confusing this whole culture and generation with all types of genders. So yes, so the fixation on inclusion should not take effect on the safety of our children and our women in the community. So yeah, you know, I just want you guys to reconsider. There's 4 men sitting in this board, and as men, I feel like you guys should protect women, especially children. So I would respectfully ask for you guys to reconsider this. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last speaker is James Richardson. Is he here? Because I'm not seeing him online either. Okay, so that's the end of our speaker list.
Thank you. Can we have a motion for the receipt and filing of correspondence?
I have a motion by Vice Mayor O'Brien. I'm waiting on a second. I have a second by Councilmember Vera. Please vote. All members have voted. That motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We will proceed with the meeting as stated in our agenda. Moving on to consent. Are there any items that colleagues would like to pull? Councilmember Erickson?
No.
Councilmember Pusa?
No, ma'am.
Councilmember Vera?
No, thank you.
Vice Mayor O'Brien?
I just have some questions on C3.
Okay. And I am also curious about C8. So can we have, can we start with C3?
Madam Mayor, we also have speakers on C8 and C11.
Wonderful. So let's add those in. Thank you.
I'm sorry, we're starting on with C8?
No, C3. I'm going to take them in order, if that's okay.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. I'm Dimitri, Director of Public Works. This is an annual routine item that we bring before the city council regarding an assessment district. This is the adoption of a resolution initiating proceedings for the levy and collection of annual assessments for the Landscape Maintenance District Number 1, and ordering the preparation of the engineer's report thereon for fiscal year 2425. What we are recommending here tonight is that city council adopt the resolution initiating the proceedings for this Landscape Maintenance District. This is located around the perimeter of the Studio Estates subdivision located northeast of the intersection of Culver Boulevard and Linda Street. District Number 1 was created for the purpose of providing ongoing maintenance of landscaping within the district, which consists of the landscaped border of the subdivision on Culver Boulevard and Linda Street. Should the city council adopt the proposed resolution, an engineer's report will be prepared that will document the estimated revenues and expenditures for the district. And this concludes my report.
Yeah, two quick questions. Thank you, Dimitri. How frequently is landscaping done there?
At least once a month.
Okay. Can, I know this isn't officially included in there, but at least can the landscapers document and report to the, what, the status of the bike lane, if there's any of the delineators that are broken, if there's accumulation of debris on the armadillos? That's kind of, that... That's kind of, that tends to accumulate. And it'd be great if that could be kept an eye on by, since you have those folks there.
It's currently not in their scope of work, but we-
To the record for item C6?
That's true.
Since we're going in order?
That's right. Apologies, CFO sober. Apologies for that. Did see that email.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here to read into the record correction for item C6, which is the approval of an agreement with UniFirst Corporation for uniform rental and uniform-related products and services. And it reads in an amount not to exceed $70,000. And that should be $70,000 per fiscal year.
Wonderful. Colleagues, do you have any questions or concerns about the amendment? Seeing them, thank you so much for that update. We're moving on to C8.
We have two speakers who've requested to speak, Mary DeValle and Daniella V. Mary's in the audience.
Can we also have a little staff report on C8, if that's okay?
Sure.
Good evening. This is Diana Cheng, the Chief Transportation Officer. I have Dorothy Leshichkova here. She will do a brief staff report. Hi, I'm Council and Mayor. My name's Dorothy Leshichkova. I'm the Transportation and Mobility Planning Manager for Culver City Transportation. I'm here to talk about item C8. This is for our, the Transportation Department's in the city's comprehensive mobility services plan. This will provide a number of innovative transportation studies regarding evaluating the operational performance of our fixed routes services, our Culver City Bus. Improve the operational efficiency and ridership of Culver City Bus. Improve our bus's connectivity with the other transit operators in the region, include robust stakeholder and community engagement. Optimize our transportation network in the post-pandemic context. And analyze new and innovative mobility service options and evaluate the opportunity to better integrate the new mobility options with the Culver City Bus Transit Network. Also importantly, the CMSP will better position Culver City in the region to meet unmet transit demand, improve transit efficiency effectiveness and access, and maintain agency sustainability and align our transit goals and operationalize them with the general plan update goals. And we recommend that the City Council approve a professional services agreement with Nelson Nygaard Consulting Associates to conduct a comprehensive mobility service analysis in the amount that's in the staff report. And Diana, if there's any further notes you wanted to highlight, we're happy to also answer any questions.
Thank you.
This is great. Thank you, Dorothy.
Do you want to go ahead with speakers, Mary?
Wonderful.
Mary DeValle will be your speaker, followed by Daniella V. But I'm not seeing Daniella online, so Mary will probably be the only speaker.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. I'm thrilled to see this item coming before you tonight, and I hope that you will adopt it unanimously. It's imperative that we begin to plan for dealing with our long-term vision for mobility. What we are doing now will likely not be workable in 20 years, given the growing pressures of traffic, climate, and increasing population density. We must learn to adapt as a community in ways that support our values of equitable inclusion. And I'm so thrilled that our Transportation Department is willing to take on this enormous and valuable task for the community. I'm looking forward to some truly innovative and creative approaches of how to deal with our challenges, including best practices from around the region as well as around the world, and maybe even some things that no one has even thought of yet. I'm just a little bit concerned that are we allotting enough time and enough money to really do an excellent job? Although I trust our staff, if they say this is what they need, I think we should go for it. And I am definitely looking forward to being a part of this process. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's the end of our speaker.
Okay. My only feedback or curiosity as it pertains to this issue, I just wanted to make sure that we were, and I'm sure this is already being taken into account, but just wanted to amplify, you know, the existing bike and pedestrian plan, the traffic study that had been done, this is pre-pandemic. But, you know, the city has a lot of plans. And I just wanted to make sure that that was elevated as we continue to do the work of ensuring our community is thinking, you know, how we're going to be in 2045 and making sure that our transportation goals and all of those are met. So I just wanted to amplify that as we had this consent item. But I deeply appreciate Dorothy and Director Cheng as well for providing a brief staff report. Colleagues, do you have any questions or concerns on C8? All right. City Clerk, you also said C11. Is that right?
That's correct. It's also Mary DeValle.
Okay. Frequent flyer, Mr. DeValle. Take your time. We're here. We are here.
Thank you so much for this time. I really appreciate it. It does feel a little bit odd that I would feel I have to come here and urge you to accept this money, this grant money. It's free money that will pay for a project that we've been waiting for and planning for many years. I remember talking about this very project on Robertson with Hebel Gundy back when she worked for the city. That was many, many years ago. So this has been in the works for a long time. First and Last Mile Solutions are imperative if we are to increase usage of active transportation, which we desperately need to do. I just beg of you to honor the hard work already done by staff to get this grant and accept this money that we've been awarded. And let's finally get this project done. Thank you very much.
Any questions or concerns as it pertains to C11 from colleagues? Okay, were there any other comments from the Public City Clerk?
Not at the time. Thank you.
Sounds good. It looks like there's a motion for all items, I'm assuming.
We have a motion by Councilmember Vera to approve the consent calendar. And I'm waiting for a second. The second by Councilmember Pusa. Please vote. All members have voted, and that motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. We are moving on to our action items. We're going to begin in order, starting with A1. Consideration of a request from the Asian World Film Festival to rename a portion of A Street to Bruce Lee Alley pursuant to City Council Policy 3403, with direction to our City Manager as seems appropriate.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. This evening, staff is asking for your direction regarding a request from the Asian World Film Festival to rename a portion of A Street, the alley between Town Plaza and Van Buren Street to Bruce Lee Alley pursuant to City Council Policy 3403. The current policy outlines the policy's responsibilities and procedures associated with the commemorative and memorandum naming of city property and facilities. The policy is intended to guide staff in the City Council in the commemorative naming of city property, including buildings, support facilities, park sites, and recreation facilities, and to ensure that the commemorative naming of city property and facilities is accomplished in a manner that is objective, consistent, and comports with city regulations. The policy outlines four commemorative naming levels of recognition and associated criteria. The Level 4 recognition, which is for naming of a city property, including streets, plazas, and facilities after an honorary, is the most stringent and requires an individual's consistent and extraordinary contributions to the Culver City community. These requirements include a signed petition of support by 75% of the Culver City residents within the immediate geographic neighborhood as outlined in the policy; two, serving in a leadership position with the community or as a renowned regional, national, or historic figure; three, providing a minimum of 20-year service to the Culver City community; four, fundamentally influencing city policy; five, considered a well-known and respected pillar of the Culver City community demonstrated by his or her career and civic activities within the city. In January, the Asian World Film Festival noted that it had been difficult to attain signatures required by the policy and requested assistance from the City Council to advance the effort. City Council directed staff to meet with the Asian World Film Festival to discuss the application requirements and provide suggestions relative to community outreach strategies. Staff suggested options including preparing a mailer to all residents within the geographic area with a return postcard, developing a website to obtain digital signatures, and/or hosting a community event and participating in other community events. While these methods may assist in obtaining the required signatures on the petition, it is important to note that the other Level 4 application criteria have not been demonstrated in the current Asian World Film Festival's submittal or as outlined in the staff report, and would likely not be met, given the service and civic requirements outlined in the policy. The Asian World Film Festival acknowledges that their application may not meet all of the requirements stipulated. However, they feel that Mr. Lee's global contribution to martial arts, which began while filming and residing in Culver City, is significant. If the Council is interested in considering the request and progressing the street naming application, the City Council could consider waiving or amending the current City Council policy requirements, one or more items, as outlined in Section 5 of the policy. If there's interest in waiving or amending the policy requirements, staff would return with proposed amendments to the policy for City Council consideration at a future meeting after first meeting with the ad hoc City Council Policy Subcommittee and conducting additional community outreach per City Council direction. That concludes my report, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. Any questions from colleagues before we go to comments? Vice Mayor?
Eileen. Regarding the requirements, these are commas and ands after these, not ors, right?
That is correct. There are five ands.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for that point of clarity. And Councilmember Pusa, thank you.
Just want to confirm that that section does not currently have a street name, correct?
We call it A Street.
Okay, but great. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Any other questions from colleagues? Okay, let's go into our public comments. Do we have any?
Yes, we have three speakers signed up. Eileen Chen, Andy Cheng, and Kareem Sally. Start with Eileen, followed by Andy.
Hi, everyone. How are you guys? How are you, Mayor, and all the council? So my name is Andy Cheng. I represent AWFF, Asian World Film Festival, and Bruce Lee Foundation. So personally, this project, I talked to Shalani, the Bruce Lee daughter and Bruce Lee Foundation, about trying to see we can rename the street or section. So we come up with three different ideas. So the bigger wish is try to buy the house and then rename the street. And then the second one is only rename the street without buying the house, because we know the law about the resident's house cannot be, maybe cannot be a museum. So and then the last section, the option three, is a small section would be the one that links to the theater as a little small bed alley. I don't think they have name there. So that will be the minimum we want to. Put the statue there and then tell the story about this Bruce Lee. When he young, he living in Culver City. So I'm talking about trying to get all the new generation to understand when you pursue the dream, you come to some place you want to. So he want a concrete for Hollywood, so he moved to Culver City. So by doing this idea is, I think, it's lucky Culver City supporting us on the AWFF and also Bruce Lee Foundation. So we come up with this idea is because it's just coincidentally, he lived right there, lived way at Culver City. So if this is happening in Hollywood, we go to Hollywood City. So, but we have a lot of trying, you know, we knowing the policy have, we need 2,000 name from the resident. We try, you know, we have 200 by Eileen, you know. But I also heard is the city, if interesting or the mayor have an interesting and think this is good for the Culver City, good for the new generation, good for the culture and the storytelling, and try to make a place, it's kind of like name for Culver City to let the people know this story happening here in 1967 and 68. So that's the whole idea we will come into, you know, pitch for this idea. So I hope the city can help to help us, you know, how we get through those, you know, difficult policy. If some kind of exemption can help us to get food and signature or something we can do, we try our best, you know, beside financial, beside the manpower. We just want to know is it possible or impossible? So if it's possible, we don't care how difficult, we will try with anything we can do. But if it's something is, you cannot, we cannot change the law, we cannot change in the country or whatever the city, then it doesn't matter how great this dream, this idea. So we want to know is it, from the city point of view, it's like, okay, this is cool. You can do something. We can help. With the city helping, I think we can go much easier and then try to make that happening. But if it's something is, city cannot changing and then by the law. So then we have to figure out how, but then-
Okay, Mr. Cheng, you're out of time. Did you want to share-
Sure, yeah, what, sorry.
-your time with Eileen Chen?
I will stay a little bit, and I'll yield my time to Mr. Chen.
You got one more minute.
One more minute? Only one moment.
If you cede your time, you get one minute.
Okay, I'll talk fast. So I think I've been sitting here, listening to all the diversity, all the celebration, all the things that Culver City provide to the people, general public. I'm very touched being, Asian World Film Festival being here for, this is our 10th year. We're very lucky and very honored that the city has always helped us to do all the things and make our film festival grow. With this, we really think this will bring a lot as a win-win situation for the city, for you to appreciate the thing he has done. I know he's not here. He cannot communicate 20 years. But if he were alive, I'm pretty sure he will love to see this happen, because he want to see this as a philosophy, to see how people grow together as no race, no color, but everybody, love and peace, work together to make this happen. Not just film, but art. It's a philosophy, how we grow and grow together. I'm going to give more time to Andy, because he's much more, better talker than I am.
Yeah, also, no, it's not. But because, you know, this thing is happening two years ago when I got this idea from the festival. So they tell me, and then luckily, I'm kind of like in charge and helping that. We are really have a big dream. We already make the statue, even we don't know we can. But we make the Bruce Lee Award, the first one from the Bruce Lee Foundation, the daughter. We make the statue like three foot tall. We want to find it, hopefully, we can find a place, a place in, and put the work on it and tell the people, when Bruce Lee in Hollywood, that's the place he start his dream. So and this is the telling the story for the young kid. It's not just a Chinese story. It's about a kid, you know, when he thinking something, he take the place from Seattle, move to Culver City and start pursue his dream. So I think it's a really great story. And then like I said, you know, like what I'm saying, Bruce Lee, he have a lot of, you know, philosophy is about under the health and the one family. So this is something I think is, I think for Culver City, if we support, you know, the culture, support the idea, I think this is a great thing to do and then create a little landmark there. So like I said earlier, we have a big dream. We want to buy the house. And then we find financing people say if the city allow, we got to donation the house to the Bruce Lee Foundation, and we do a charity. Idea is not of making money thing. It's just want to tell the story. But like I said, there's a big story, a big dream and small dream. So either way, for us, we want to know the city's support or not, you know. If support, yeah, and then we can try.
By the way, I would say that Bruce Lee Foundation, if needed, they'd be happy to come here and make the case too. come here and make the case too, they're willing to come here. We have their 100% support, and to be honest, the 200 people so far walk and they support us all the time.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I think, I mean, there's a why I can say is like even Shalani-
Thank you. That's the end of our-
Oh, sorry.
Our next and last speaker is Kareem Sally. Kareem, I've unmuted you, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, go ahead.
Awesome. I'm being excited by this idea. I think the alley is not enough. I will recommend to not only change the name of Alley A, but also change the name of Irving and having Bruce Lee Street, and create an exemption, a zoning exemption for this house when it's bought by the foundation to turn it into a little museum. It will bring an incredible amount of tourist dollars here in Culver City. The legacy of Bruce Lee does not have to be proven. When I was a kid in France, I watched those movies and I was excited. It is a well-known figure that is not to be demonstrated. And, you know, 50 years after his passing, we still talk about him and we still sell posters and postcards. I mean, he is a giant, and we had the chance to still have a home where he lived in. We still have this opportunity to have a foundation that wants to support such project. It will be foolish not to, you know, encourage that idea and foster it, so it can grow into something that will be a really incredible and beneficial addition to our city legacy and past. It will be, as the gentleman just mentioned, you know, a win-win, a clear economical, cultural win-win for the whole city. And I really would love to push the council to go 300% within this idea and turn the street into Bruce Lee Street, the house into a museum. I will even go bolder, let's put a sculpture somewhere with Bruce Lee, because it is a monument that should not be discarded, and I think we should celebrate that legacy and put it front and center in the city. I'm sorry, I didn't vote the comment, I'm just being excited, and I'm really, really, really recommend the council to go full steam ahead and rename the whole street Bruce Lee. Thank you so much for your time, thank you for indulging my time.
Thank you, that's the end of our speakers.
Thank you, Councilmember Aaron.
Well, I was part of going through and coming up with these new standards for different recognitions. We had something before, and I think it was Councilmember Jim Clark and myself were on the subcommittee and worked on this with staff for a year, and we brought it to council, it was discussed, and then it was decided on. There is a lot of thinking behind this, and it's also copied and from other cities and taking sort of the best that we found. To sidestep this has to be something exceptional. And in this case, it's a very famous actor, but I'm sure that, and I see we have our historical associations present down here, they can probably name another 100 famous actors that lived in Culver City at one time or another, or entertainers or something like that, right? Bruce Lee lived here for one year, and that's it. And I, I don't, these things are put there, because we don't have that many spaces that we can actually name, right? And we have to be very careful with when we do that, that it's really something that makes sense. You know, we, you know, there are different levels here, so maybe, maybe there is more appropriate to do lesser thing, but I don't, I don't see any reason for this to making exception here, because we have so many that has been engaged in the entertainment industry that has lived in Culver City and been famous. And we also know that, you know, there is a Bruce Lee Museum in Seattle, he's buried up there, and that was by his wishes, because from what I understand is that that's where he and his wife felt home, and that's where they sort of were the most happy. And so, his connection is really in Seattle, from what I have understood. So, to make this exception, I don't think it raises to meeting all those requirements. And the staff indicates that if we do that, it's just something that we're going to continue doing, and we will run out of space pretty quick that we can name. So, I'm not in favor of changing or giving an exception here. I would encourage that, maybe we should figure something else out that is doable and possible to do, right? With regards to that, you know, we have the other levels, there might be other ways of doing this. So, thank you, that's my thought right now. I might hear something from my colleagues that makes a good point also, so, yeah.
Thank you, Councilmember Fuzza.
Thank you, Mayor. Bruce Lee is no doubt a household name, a pop culture icon, a representative of the AAPI community. I think it's incredible that the city has sponsored the Asian World Film Festival for going on 10 years now, bringing Asian cinema to the city and the region, adding international flavor to our city, and an opportunity for residents to gain not only a valuable artistic experience, but also a cultural one as well. I applaud the organizers' tenacity and drive to make this happen. I love the philosophy of growing with. I do think this needs to grow a little more. I appreciate what y'all are doing, but I just, I don't think it's there yet. We do have policies for a reason, and I do respect the process that Councilmember Erickson described. I would be open to making an exception. I do think we can get around setting precedent, because the street is not already named. Maybe it could be, you know, also, there could be some tie-in with, you know, promotional materials, always including the name Culver City. I would encourage the, if the organizers are serious, taking the recommendation of the mailers, the website, has that been done? I'm assuming that hasn't been done. So, and the website, the events, you know, last month, there was the Asian American Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander Parent Affinity Group, they hosted a night market. There's the Culver City High School Asian Cultural Union, El Rey Cone AAPI Club, there's also martial arts groups in Culver City, there's film groups, the Historical Society, there's a lot of groups in Culver City that I know, I definitely would want to see much more community support in the signatures as a baseline before moving any forward anymore. So, that's where I'm at with this, at this point. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Vera.
Thank you, Mayor. I echo my colleagues' comments and concerns. You know, I might also add that, you know, we've done it before, where we name a certain portion or place a sign, and maybe naming it Bruce Lee Square, Bruce Lee Corner, something where we can, it's attainable. I think, you know, given the criteria here, I don't know that the organization will be able to meet this criteria and to create a waiver. I think opens up the door for interpretation later on down the line for various other organizations or whatnot to apply for the same thing. I don't know where my colleagues stand on it, but maybe, maybe we can look into Bruce Lee Corner, and having the city put up a sign, have the ceremony or whatnot. But other than that, I appreciate your, Eileen and Andy coming out here and speaking on this, and like Councilmember Fuzza said, your tenacity and your spirit, and just overall, I think, passion about this project, but thank you very much, those are my comments, Mayor.
Thank you. Vice Mayor O'Brien?
Thank you, Mayor, and thanks so much for your impassioned pleas for this, and, you know, I'm a big fan of your film festival. I think it's such a, it really is an honor for Culver City to be the host of that, and I hope it continues on in perpetuity. Some of the thought, I mean, these qualifications are pretty hard to overcome, and I do want to, you know, echo my colleagues' remarks that there's so many great film stars who've lived in Culver City, who've worked in Culver City. At the top of my head, I can think of, you know, Lucille Ball, who actually had a studio right there, adjacent to that alley, and, you know, Louis Armstrong, many, many, many others, and it would be hard to set a precedent and have recognition for this one great person, icon. Bruce Lee, I was, my earliest memories as a child, I remember Bruce Lee, my uncle had his books and was a big martial art aficionado, he was always working out, and I was, I remember looking it up, and I was kind of inspired by him. I think there are some possibilities, like my colleague said. I was thinking, you know, that, that space is kind of a, it's a pas de deux, basically, it's just a pass-through area. I'm wondering if there isn't an opportunity for us to have multiple iconic Culver City cinema greats recognized in that stretch, if they were statues or whatever it might be. I think we can be creative and make that little corridor a destination. Bruce Lee, Lucille Ball, Louis Armstrong, you know, we filmed Gone with the Wind here, you know, parts of, you know, so many other movies. But, yeah, as a standalone and making Bruce Lee the first to not qualify in the way that we've set this up, it's really, then we're going to have every advocate for all these other movie stars come in and say, where's my street? And we won't be able to fulfill that, because there's only so many streets. So, I'd like to get creative and find a way to do this, you know, to have recognition for Bruce Lee, but also for other, you know, cinematic icons. And I know he's just more than an actor and a martial artist, but he's so much more. But I'd like to look at that opportunity, and I do agree that it could be a draw for Culver City to do that. And the museum, it's just, you know, it's in a residential area, that idea. I know that people on that street right now are already complaining about parking. It would be a real challenge to do something like that on that street, unfortunately. I'm sure the residents might, well, maybe they wouldn't want a plaque in front of their house, but it's a really cool thing that we have that in our city, so, thank you.
All right. Looks like we do not have consensus this evening to request to rename A Street adjacent to town plaza to Bruce Lee Alley for a number of the reasons stated, but I think most noticeably that the prongs are not met, that were set by city policy, unfortunately. I do think that I heard consensus in terms of potentially going back and seeing if there's any interest of exploring another path of recognition. I know that Councilmember Vera mentioned a corner, the Vice Mayor mentioned some sort of, I don't know if we could pull off statues, but some sort of looking to have a more expansive celebration of past folks who have had a history in our community and have had a strong, you know, impact on, I guess, maybe entertainment. It looks like that could be particularly because of the area. Is that something that you feel y'all could come back on, and do we need a subcommittee? Or maybe that wasn't agendized, so that wouldn't be possible this evening, but I just want to make sure that we don't leave this here and that it continues to be something that we work on and explore. So, do you think that there is something here? There was not strong opposition here, but it was just the manner in which we could go about the celebration?
Madam Mayor, an additional thing would be for, let's explore the possibility to put a, there is park benches in that pas de deux. You know, one thing would be to explore to put a plaque on one of the benches, and then following up with Councilmember Brian's idea, there could be more plaques on that area, right? So, that could be something to explore also, and see, and if the applicants are interested in that. So, there might be options. So, the question is, how do we explore that? Do we decide to form a committee, or we ask staff to come up and be creative, come up with certain ideas and so on, and then we see what is required to meet, you know, meet whatever we think. So, I don't, anyone has suggestions, because I hear from the mayor that, let's not drop this, but figure out a way to explore it further or move, and then we probably should make that decision, that how we move forward.
Councilmember Vera?
Yeah, I, you know, I was thinking what we did for Judge Chernus, who had, you know, so many years of dedicated service in our local courthouse, our one's local courthouse, where we put up a plaque in honor of him and his service, something like that, is something possible. But, yeah, how do we get there? I don't know if staff comes back with, you know, some, maybe some ideas that are attainable that we can do without really creating too much variance in the ordinance that we can do easily, providing the applicant is agreeable to that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I just want to give the city staff an opportunity to respond.
Sure, so, we're happy to come back with some ideas. We have a new cultural affairs manager that'll be coming on staff next week, so I think we'd like to confer with her, and then we can come back. In regard to the suggestion about the corner, I think that might still qualify as a renaming of a facility or a plaza, so I'm going to defer to City Attorney Heather Baker.
Yeah, so, the corner, a street intersection or a parkway or something like that, it's still, it's a Level Three recognition, which has its own criteria. The plaque that Councilmember Erickson was referring to is a Level Two, and then there's nameplates that are Level One. So, there's various, various things that can be done under the policy, so maybe staff can explore that, as well as any other creative ideas, and bring back various options for the city council to consider if that, if that sounds like the direction that the council wants to go.
I think that's what we heard consensus, it sounds like Councilmember-
I asked, when we bring this new person on board, I think it would, maybe it would be good to involve the Historical Society also, that probably have ideas what could be done.
Sure, so, just to be clear, what I'm hearing is looking at possibly doing something creative in this particular pas de deux or corridor that could be honoring significant individuals in the entertainment industry.
Thank you so much. Thank you, everyone who spoke this evening, and we will await our new cultural affairs staff member, and I trust that staff will bring that back for us when it is ready. Thank you again for coming out this evening. We're going to move on to A2, the receipt and filing of a report on findings from ARG regarding the City of Culver City's Historical Context Study Discussion Report and Next Steps with Direction as Seemed Appropriate.
All right. Good evening, Mayor McMorn and City Council members. Just a little bit of background first, on June 14th, the city council expressed a commitment to making Culver City a welcoming and inclusive community by voting to adopt Resolution Number 2021 R066, acknowledging the racial history of Culver City. In 2022, per the direction from the city council ad hoc equity subcommittee, which included former Mayor Daniel Lee and current Mayor McMorn, Yasmani Mani McMorn, staff researched four cities, City of Evanston, Illinois, City of San Luis Obispo, California, City of West Hollywood, California, and the City of Santa Monica, California, to learn more about reparation programs that were either developed or in the process of being developed in each agency. in each agency. During the August 8th, 2022 city council meeting, staff presented the processes these cities followed to create their systems of reparations designed to narrow the racial income and housing gaps in their cities. City council also received a presentation from Camila Moore, the Department of Justice California's Reparation Task Force Chair. During the city council meeting, council members voted unanimously in favor of conducting a historical context study for the city to help inform future discussions and directions for reparations. At the September 12th, 2022 city council meeting, council authorized staff to prepare an issue and request for proposals, or an RFP, to prepare a historical context study for the city of Culver City. The report generated from the historical context study was to investigate the historical context of racial segregation and discriminatory policies in the city. The study's purpose was to serve as one of the key pieces of data in creating a system of reparations going forward. At the January 23rd, 2023 council meeting, council approved a professional services agreement with Architectural Research Group for the preparation of the historical context study for the city of Culver City, led by Katie Horak and Andrew Goodrich and Alicia Paluchek. The ARG team has been working diligently over the past year to complete the study. ARG presented a draft of the historical study, context study to ERAC on August 22nd, 2023 for review, questions and clarifications. Tonight, ARG's Andrew Goodrich and Katie Horak are here to present the final draft of the historical context study with a brief presentation. Without further ado, please welcome Andrew Goodrich and Katie Horak of Architectural Resources, Resources Group. Sorry.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the council. My name is Andrew Goodrich. I'm with Architectural Resources Group, ARG. I'm joined here tonight by my colleague Katie Horak, who's behind me. She's also from ARG. And as Janine mentioned, our team has been working on the historical context study for this past year, and we're very pleased to be here tonight before he to present our study to you. My next slide, please. So I'm going to begin our presentation by discussing the purpose of the study. And the staff report goes into much greater detail, but the overarching purpose of our study is to collect and analyze historical information related to segregation and inequity in the city of Culver City, and to synthesize this information so that the city has the historical data that it needs to inform future equity initiatives. So specifically, the study has a couple of purposes. First, to document racially and culturally discriminatory practices and policies. Second, to contextualize these practices and policies. Third, to trace the city's demographic patterns over time. And fourth, to discuss how discrimination has shaped, and in many cases continues to shape, the lived experiences of those who live, work, and otherwise engage in Culver City. Next slide, please. So that's really the purpose. Next, I wanted to spend just a minute talking about our approach. Our methodology was really consisted of two key components. The first component of our methodology entailed extensive primary and secondary source research, so that our team really could collect and synthesize and understand all available documented information related to the topic at hand. We cast our net very wide with respect to research. We consulted a wide variety of research materials, both primary and secondary sources. Primary source information was derived largely from newspaper archives. So this includes publications like the Los Angeles Times, local publications like the Evening Star News, which was based here in Culver City, and the Evening Express, which was a Venice-based publication. They provide often some more hyper-local, if you will, information about what was going on in this part of town. We also looked at black-owned newspapers, including the California Eagle and the Los Angeles Sentinel. These proved to be very important sources of information for us, as they reported on issues really related to race and segregation and inequities that often were not reported on in more mainstream publications like the LA Times. In addition, we visited the collections of the Culver City Historical Society. We're very grateful to the Historical Society for opening their doors to us. We were able to, to really do a deep dive into their extensive collection of archival materials related to the city's history. Census data, we looked at census data, we collected and analyzed it to understand really broad demographic patterns in Culver City over time and how they have changed and evolved. We were able to find what are officially called residential security maps and are more, I guess, commonly known as redlining maps. These were produced by federal housing agencies in the 1930s, and they played a significant role in really reinforcing and perpetuating patterns of racial segregation. Other sources that we looked at included books and scholarship on topics related to race and discrimination in Southern California and beyond, as well as the work of several local researchers who have studied this topic at length and really provided a strong foundation that we were able to then build upon. Next slide, please. So that, that was the research component of our work. The second really important part of our methodology included a public outreach program. In May of 2023, a dedicated project webpage was launched on the city's website. The webpage remained live over the course of the project, included information about the project, including frequently asked questions. It also included a link to an online public comment form. This public comment form gave members of the public an opportunity to reach out and share information with our team at ARG. The form included very 10, 10 very broad questions. It was intended to be accessible. We didn't want it to be a chore for anybody to, to fill this out. And it really, these questions related to people's own experiences with discrimination in Culver City. It also included an open text field where any additional thoughts or comments that were not necessarily conveyed in the standard questions can be conveyed. The form was available in two languages, in English and in Spanish. And it was live on the website between May and September of 2023. We received a total of 179 responses to the form. Just to put that in perspective, a lot of other communities that we work in with public outreach components, we're lucky if we get like, maybe like five or six people responding. So 179 was very good. We also conducted a total of 35 follow-up conversations. If there were, if there were folks who noted on the form that they'd like to talk with our team some more, typically this took the form of a 30-minute follow-up phone call or a Zoom conversation, something where we could really engage one-on-one with the respondent. So I just wanted to emphasize that outreach was a really important part of this, this work. It's one thing to read about discrimination and segregation in the abstract, in, in books and stuff like that, but at the end of the day, these are really issues that affect people and it affects them deeply. So having a chance to hear directly from people really helped us to, to better understand the concepts being discussed in the study. Next slide, please. Okay. So next, I'm, I'm just going to briefly walk through how the study is organized. First and foremost, this is a historical study. So it made most sense to us to organize the information chronologically. You know, officially, the focus of the study really starts in 1913, when Culver City was first founded. But we do include information about what happened before, then regarding the indigenous population of Southern California. So as I mentioned, the study is organized chronologically. It's divided into three chapters. Each chapter covers a very broad period in the city's history. The first chapter addresses the period before World War II, when racial discrimination was widely accepted as the status quo in our society. The second chapter addresses the period during and after World War II, which coincided with the rise of the modern civil rights movement, which reached its apex in the 1960s. And the third chapter addresses what we call the contemporary era, which is broadly defined as the period after 1980. Each chapter follows the same general structure. It begins with a historical overview. This overview gives some general background information to provide some context into what was going on in Culver City at the time. Then it includes a discussion of how discrimination reared its head in both the public sector, so things like land use management, zoning policy, housing policy, things like that, as well as the private sector. So these are things that occurred outside the official purview of government. So kind of real estate tactics, discriminatory business practices, that kind of thing. So it was really intended to be holistic and all-encompassing. So this section of each chapter that really dives into the discriminatory practices, this is really the meat, excuse me, the meat of the document. It includes a discussion of documented instances of discrimination in Culver City that we uncovered through our research and our outreach. And then at the end of each chapter, there's a conclusion with an overview of the community's demographic patterns as reported in the decennial census. Next slide, please. So this historical context study is a critical first step for the city as it acknowledges elements of its racial past and seeks to develop and implement future equity initiatives. The intent of this document is really to provide an authoritative account of discrimination in the city over time that has been documented. It's intended to be an informational tool that the city and its constituents can turn to moving forward. These are, I just wanted to conclude by saying these are challenging issues to confront, but it is important to acknowledge and account for all aspects of history, good and not-so-good, to paint a complete picture and ensure that the historical record tells a full and accurate story. Next slide, please. And that concludes our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from colleagues? Let's start with Councilmember Erickson.
If the consultant could come up. You've done a number of these studies for other cities?
We have, yes.
Anything in this that stands out, good or bad?
I think one thing that stood out to us that we didn't find in some other studies is that Culver City, while it does have a documented history of segregation and racist policies and practices, there were efforts undertaken in the 1960s, beginning in the late 1960s, to really turn this around. And that is something that we were surprised to see in our research. So I guess that would be the good. And it's something that is not, certainly not the case in, in other cities we've worked in.
Thank you. That was my question.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Fuzza?
No questions. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Vera?
No questions, Mayor. Thank you. Thank you for the report, by the way. It's really an extensive report, and I appreciate all the time you guys put into it.
Thank you. Vice Mayor O'Brien?
Just one quick question. I, great report. It was really fascinating to read. I was just curious why you didn't add 2020 census data? Would have been kind of nice to bring us up to current day.
Yeah. No, that's a good question. We, you know, we were kind of grappling with when to end the study. It doesn't have a firm end date. It's a historical study. And so we, we wanted to ensure that enough time had passed to really understand what was going on. That said, with the census, you know, I, I think we had firm data through 2010. We could certainly pull the data for 2020. I think we could talk with staff about how to make that work, if that's something that you would desire. But I think, to answer your question, it was really to keep this as a historical study and not something that bled too much into the present day.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. And I'm happy to hear, I know Councilmember Fuzza and I did a push through the current iteration of the Equity Subcommittee to try to get folks to participate. So I'm glad, I thought 179 was a little low, but I'm glad that folks participated and I'm grateful for this process and the work. I am curious just to follow up on Councilmember Erickson's question, what specifically the city did in the 1960s that was different from other cities? I know there was a lot of civil rights and fair, you know, things were happening on the federal level that potentially they could have been working on, but just curious.
Absolutely. One thing that, I, I think the biggest piece of information that we found toward that end was in 1968, the city actually commissioned a, a study from the Coro Foundation, which was a think tank. And the purpose of the study was, the city was acknowledging that with the Supreme Court decisions that outlawed many of the practices that had reinforced segregation for years, they knew that the demographics of the city were likely to change. And they wanted to get out ahead of any tension or problems that came as a result of that. And so they, they commissioned this study. And then the following year, 1969, they actually established a commission, a human relations commission, which was really dedicated specifically to these issues and was, whose stated purpose is really to ensure that the city was acting in such a way, really to overcome past practices of discrimination and working toward becoming more, they, they used the word inclusion, which I think for 1969 was pretty, pretty good. So that, that's a specific example. There were other private sector instances, too. There were a number of neighborhood organizations and fair housing councils that were run by independent citizens that organized, and they really helped people of color navigate the often kind of nebulous and unfair housing practices of the time and really helped pave the way for integrating many of Culver City's neighborhoods.
That is helpful. Thank you so much. My only other question as it pertains to the report itself is, in some instances, probably more of the earlier parts of our history, there are more, you know, there's more specificity with names and, and more details, but as we get to the present, there's less of that. And just to lift up, you know, our decision to even apologize for our racist past was not a unanimous decision. You know, I know that's difficult and, you know, but I think it's important, you know, this process of unearthing where we've been and acknowledging our history and our journey to being here in 2024, also with a lot, a lot more, a lot more to go, is my hope. But unearthing where we've been, I think it's important to, to, you know, lift it up. So I wondered if that was a conscious choice to, as we, you know, as people might still be living or our names might be more familiar, was that a choice to not lift up specific voice, votes or specific names as it pertains to sort of the recent history?
I can take this, or if, I don't know if staff wants to?
I can take it.
Okay.
No problem. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers, City Manager and City Attorney. My name is Michelle Hamilton. I am the Senior HR and Equity Manager for the city. And, you know, when we launched this project and we received the report back, indeed, there were names listed throughout the report. And when we talked about it internally, you know, we thought about, well, you know, a lot of this information is already available through public means, whether it's public record or through news media archives. And we thought in terms of moving the city forward, that it would be best to suppress the names in order to really foster more powerful and impactful change in the future. And, you know, the staff is looking forward to the development of the racial, the racial equity action plan, the REEP. And we look at the, the context study as a first but significant step in examining those public policy pulse points that need to be addressed. So rather than focusing on the names, we wanted to focus more on the issues that we need to look at going forward.
So just to be clear, there, there is an iteration of the report that is historical.
Yes.
But what we have now is redacted. Or certain things are redacted. Okay. All right. Well, thank you for, for answering that. Are there any public comments?
We do have one speaker, Kareem Sali. Kareem, I've unmuted you. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you so much. It's a shock to me that we, we have a document that wants to be authoritative and yet suppress names and vote records. It's, it's, I'm just in shock. It's, it's, I'm just in shock. If we want to have an authoritative historical document, at least provide, even realize that a vote for an apology, for a racial apology happened, and until it's written on the document, they will not even think of looking for it. I find that really bizarre, to put it mildly, that that information is not there. And I, and I really would like to have the non-redacted version of that document. It's quite shocking not, not to put all the information that one will want to know in the future under the pretext that we want to just, quote unquote, move forward. I'm sorry, in order to move forward, we need to know we did what and how and what was their, their intention at the time. With that information, I'm not sure the next generation will be able to, to get that information again in 20, 50, 100 years from now. That document will be an essential part of that. And I will, I will recommend that you release the non-redacted version. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So what we have in front of us is to receive this report and discuss the report and next steps. So I will pass it over to Councilmember Erickson.
Yeah, thank you. Well, first, I'm gonna, I'm gonna address the issue that you alluded to about when we voted on this resolution. There was actually a vote before the second vote. The first vote was a motion by, and second by Councilmember Vera and myself, to adopt the Glendale Resolution, which was actually more inclusive in its language than, than what we finally ended up with here. And it didn't include reparation as an issue. So to try to paint this in any other way is sort of dishonest in a way, right? So I also want to make that clear since the question has been asked that, and Councilmember Vera can, can speak for himself, but for me, I supported the Glendale Resolution because it was more inclusive. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Puzza.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you to staff and to the Architectural Research Group, Research Group for the work on this historical contextual, context study. I want to commend the prior council who supported the resolution, acknowledging the racial history of Culver City. As it hard as it is, we have to acknowledge the truth, the pain and the uncomfortableness of our pasts in order to move forward. We have to ground ourselves in history. It's critically important right now to tell the truth, the accurate truth about our history of the city and not the whitewashed truth, especially at a time when people are trying to tell different versions of our country's history. There have been disagreements and confusion in our community as to what happened in the past. So this was a valuable step in understanding the segregation and discrimination that has happened to the indigenous people of this land, to Black, Latino, and Asian communities, to the Jewish community, to the immigrant and LGBTQ communities, and how that all shaped the city we live in today. The study confirms how the level of racism, classism, antisemitism, and other forms of religious discrimination and xenophobia that existed in our city and those remnants remain. But this was not unique to Culver City. This was happening in the region, in the country, and frankly, it was happening all over the world. It's a dark stain on our, in our history, yet it is undeniable the city has made tremendous progress. We are trying our best. Yet all this didn't happen because goodness and justice happens on its own. On the contrary, it happens because people fight for it. People show leadership when it's not popular because it's the right thing to do. So the question remains, is it possible for a city to balance these tensions and hold seemingly contradictory things at the same time? And the answer is yes, with a caveat, if we want to. If we keep our heads stuck in the sand and keep doing things the way they've always done, we'll keep repeating the same mistakes because our system was designed that way. However, we can begin to dismantle the outdated system and collectively create a new one that allows everyone to be included and thrive. The potential for reconciliation and change is possible. I'm a cynical optimist, so I have hope. I think it's important to think about what history will write about us in 100 years. We all have our pasts, and we need to individually discern how to take responsibility for our individual past, but we collectively have to take responsibility for our future. What will history say about what handled, how we handled this situation? Do we continue to hide our head in the sand, or do we choose to evolve? As for this study, I'd love for this to be incorporated into any work regarding the reparations study, into the racial equity plan. Also, in the study, I was wondering if we can, if it's a living document, if we can look at when the Fox Hills was annexed into Culver City, the residents were eligible to attend the school district on permits. So if we can look into that, if that's accurate, if we can verify that. Also, just wondering, you know, there's a part in the study that talked about, also in Fox Hills, how the neighbors, you know, wanted to ban people from, black people from playing basketball because it was too noisy. And so there's an incident recently about banning soccer players in one of our field, one of our parks, if we can look into that to verify it, just to make sure if that is accurate. And then the last thing is just, there is a sentence on page 62, I'm gonna send this already to staff. It's, in the third paragraph, in the second sentence, it says, it's talking about the police. It says that the amended use of force policy notably curtailed the practice of making police stops for minor traffic violations. And so it was referring to what happened in 2020, but the policy was updated in 2023. And so I know that, that end date was, there wasn't a firm end date, and so, and I had been working with Chief Sins, or I was in communication, I wasn't working with him on the directive, but I was in communication with him. And so, you know, it couldn't change because of SB 50 not passing in the state legislature. So, I mean, it's just, it's just a factual thing. So if we can either strike that or make a footnote that that had been changed and updated just to make it factually correct, the other two items in that sentence are factually correct. So those are the three things that I would love to see updated in that. And that concludes my comments. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Vera.
Thank you, Mayor. Once again, thank you so much for, for this detailed report. Just to read a brief little snippet of, I believe it's page 176, the conclusion, the first paragraph is really telling to me of where we are. It's important that we, we have recognized where we were as a city and the stride that we've done, where, where we were as a city and where we are now. We, we recognize the past, but we're celebrating where we are today and recognizing that there's still more work that can be done and should always be done in anything that we do. But the first paragraph, there's ample evidence that Culver City has made great stride in confronting and overcoming discrimination and racism. Multiple respondents to the public comment survey remarked that in spite of a handful of bad actors in the police department and other city agencies, Culver City feels like a diverse and inclusive place. Many of these respondents identified as people of color, Jewish, or other groups that have historically been disenfranchised and subjected to discrimination. Many have lived in Culver City for their entire lives. You know, just reading that shows where we are today. I really appreciate your comments about, you know, what transpired in the 60s about local groups, residents really gathering and getting together to help people of color navigate the housing environment and how to do so. I think, you know, it's, even back then, we were before our time. So really thank you for the work. We'll continue to work hard moving forward. And then just to piggyback really quick on Councilmember Erickson's remark and some of the remarks that was made by the mayor. You know, I believe when you tell a story, you got to tell the entire story, not just snippets of it, and the reason why a vote went a certain way. We did agree, at least for me, my, my perspective is, I agree wholeheartedly with the apology letter. I thought, you know, inclusivity for me is paramount, and how do we really include and be inclusive of all groups, all groups that have felt marginalized. I felt that Glendale's resolution was spot on with that. That's why we, I proposed to adopt language in the Glendale Resolution, which didn't pass. So speaking for myself, I support the letter. I thought inclusivity and being as inclusive as possible would be the avenue forward. Thank you, Mayor.
Vice Mayor O'Brien.
Thank you, Mayor. Once again, great report. I found it fascinating. I, you know, both learning about our, you know, ugly history and the strides we've made and the effort. I didn't read through it as detailed. I didn't recall what you mentioned. I went back and, and read the section about the Human Relations Committee in 1969. I'm just gonna read the resolution that was proclaimed at that time. "The City Council of Culver City finds that prejudice, intolerance, and discrimination against any individual group because of race, religion, national origin, or cultural background causes tension and conflict and therefore a menace to peace and public welfare. Such prejudice and tolerance and discrimination is contrary to the principles of our democratic way of life." And it sounds as though that was pretty unique for the day. And, you know, I know we're leading the way today. I know that, you know, we are moving forward with the Racial Equity Action Plan that we voted on unanimously. And, you know, there's, there's always gonna be, you know, two steps forward, one step back, that, you know, history does not move and, and growth does not move as a, as a people in a straight line. But I think that our, our net direction is in the right way. I did want to note, Mr. Sali asked how we can find out where this information is. This report is filled with footnotes. It's, you know, you can track back all the, all the sources for all their information to get everything you need to know. So you can not only find more information, but, you know, you can read books on Culver City's history and contribution to history. You know, I, I find data really interesting, and I was looking at the decade-by-decade census data, and Culver City continues to become more diverse and less white, even I, I pulled, I went online really quickly, and I think I got accurate numbers for 2020, and it's continuing to track that way. So exciting to see that we're moving in the right direction, and there will be stumbles along the way, no doubt. But I think that we're making every effort to grow and include all people in our beautiful city. And I just don't mean the way it looks, but the way it's so vibrant and caring and connected. I feel it when I walk down our streets. I feel it when I go in our parks. I interact with people of all races, of all backgrounds. I had, as Councilmember Puzza mentioned, enjoyed celebrating the third night of Ramadan at the King Fahad Mosque, and that was not a strange thing. It was not a strange thing. I'm of the Christian faith. It is not a strange thing for me to go to Temple Akiba. I don't think there's many people in this country or this world that can experience that. And I feel proud to be in the city, and I hope we keep fighting a good fight and keep moving forward. Thank you for your report.
I think it's no secret, I am the first Black woman to be elected to the city in 2020, and in 2023, the first Black woman to become mayor. I think there are a number of reasons why that is the case. I don't think that, I think I'm pretty great, but I think there are many systemic barriers and cultural barriers that inform who has opportunity, who is invited into a space, who is taken seriously. I often look over to the left at this hall of, or this, these portraits of, I believe, our former mayors in Culver City, and no one that looks like me is, is up on that wall. And what that communicates to our community who comes into these chambers in 2024. And when folks, you know, look out into that hallway, when they walk in and they see the photos of this body. So all of these are messages that, that are being sent and that we are internalizing. I think that it is incredibly important to have a historical accounting of what has happened, even as I was running and conversations about the history of Culver City were sometimes difficult for folks to have. But it is important. There is a principle, it's called Sankofa, it means go back and get it, encourages learning from the past to know what we are going in the future. And just to sort of put in context a bit, the reparations conversation or support or lack thereof is really timely because just last year, the report was a very, a very detailed report was written by our Reparations Task Force, and I was really grateful for Camilla Moore, who was with us. They did amazing, amazing work. I mean, if you, if you don't have time to check out the, the full detailed report, I definitely recommend that neighbors check out the executive summary of the California Reparations Task Force report. There is a lot there. The one thing that I wanted to pull out is just, just the definition of reparations, which is the act of making amends, giving satisfaction to some wrong or injury. And over 60% of Californians across our state report, support some form of reparation. So that's, that's encouraging as we have this conversation today in these chambers. I also want to lift up the definition of systemic discrimination, which I think is important as we have this conversation about a city or institution and things that we are including or maybe not including in reports. So systemic discrimination involves the procedures, routines, and organizational culture of any organization that often without intent contributes to less favorable outcomes for minority groups than for the majority of the population, from the organization's policies, programs, employment, and/or services. So, you know, I recall reading The Color of Law. We were really fortunate during our general plan process that we had here in Culver City to have the author come and speak to us. Culver City was in that book. We also have the book The Sun Downtowns. Culver City is also featured in that book. One thing that I think this report could do a better job of, and I don't know if it was redacted out or it wasn't included at all, is just really highlighting the racial terror that was a part of maintaining Sun Downtowns. I think that that is really important not to skip over because the vestiges of that and the state sanctioned or the complicity or overall acceptance of the violence is something that not just happened here, but happened across our country. The Equal Justice Initiative has a lynching museum. It's the only place in our, I think, on Initiative has a lynching museum. It's the only place in our, I think in our country that actually did the work to record all of the names and the sites of lynchings across this country. And that kind of terror, you know, they talk about Sun Downtowns, it's a wonderful, it's in Montgomery, Alabama. I know it's a far distance, but every American should really check it out because our history is complicated. It is complicated, but it is worth knowing so that we can have a diverse and inclusive and truly understand sort of how we move forward together and where some of those barriers might be or why some people might be struggling with that moving forward. So this is a good evening. This is a good day. It took a lot of time. And I do want to give recognition to the first Black person, first Black man to be elected in Culver City, Daniel Lee, who initially worked, we worked along alongside one another in trying to get the initial resolution over the finish line in 2021. And that was, you know, that was a difficult time, a difficult time. And the work continues and it will continue to progress because we are hopefully creating a pipeline of champions who want to make sure that everyone is being seen. You don't have to be a member of a marginalized group to be committed to equity, to be committed to fairness and equality and making sure that all of our community members have what they need. So the last thing that I'll say as it pertains to just this report and the fact that it exists, which again is significant, given the history, given the firsts that are still happening in 2024 and 2020 and 2018. And I expect that more firsts will continue. And I'm cheering that on. I'm excited about new leadership that is sorely needed in our community. I just want to, you know, I talk a lot about power, talk a lot about privilege. It's important to question as a community, as policymakers, who is being centered by certain decisions and choices, who is at the table and who benefits? And I think that these are, and where the power is, right? Because that's always a key piece in terms of figuring out if we're doing the right thing. Who benefits is always the question to ask ourselves. And I am having a really hard time with the decision to not include certain information. I hear staff and I respect staff's conclusion. But just, you know, as someone who, you know, it was very important to have this documented history, to have on the record this evening that, you know, decisions were made to redact information is really difficult to hear. Because the question that comes up for me is who benefits from that silencing? I don't benefit. I don't know if neighbors benefit from not having the truth. And I don't know how we stand behind a historical context study when in this conversation and in this room, it is very clear that the full story is not here by choice. So I don't want to belabor it, but I am deeply disappointed by that decision and choice that was not made by me. But systems are systeming. So we're grateful that we have some of the information here. And I guess the burden will be on folks to look at those footnotes and do some more investigation to find out more about our historical context. So.
Mayor?
Yes?
I mean, is it possible to include the?
May I clarify?
Absolutely.
Oh, sure. So again, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmember, City Manager, and City Attorney's Office. In terms of the redaction, the redaction is of personal names, not of events that have occurred. So the resources and the footnotes all support the context study in full. The information that was redacted only refers to personal names.
Are you a good council member, Puzza?
Right. So for instance, for like Mayor, for Daniel Lee, the footnote is an article and it says his name, is what you're saying? Okay. Thank you.
All right. So the direction, it looks like we will be receiving and filing this report. And where will this report live? Where can folks find this report?
On our website, on the Equity website, public facing website.
Okay. Do we have like a briefer link where people should just go to culvercity.org and look up Equity?
If they type in Equity, the page will come up and we'll make sure that there is a link there to the report.
Okay. If there are no other comments, it looks like the next step based on staff's comments is the REIT. Do you need anything additionally from us to move forward with that work? Or do we have an estimated time when that will be back before us?
Sorry, Mayor, I'm sorry. I just have a burning question.
Yeah, please, please.
Is there a report that does include the names, though, written into the report? I just have to ask that question.
Yes, there is.
And is that possible to vote on that tonight?
I would think so, yes.
Okay. Is that, do any of my colleagues have an interest in voting on that?
Mayor, yeah?
Absolutely, Vice Mayor.
The reason I do not, and I don't know if this is staff's reasoning, but there's, I believe that there's family, you know, descendants of these folks who live in Culver City. I know of one at least. And that kind of sins of the father type thing. I, you know, I don't think that they deserve that burden. That's kind of what I'm thinking. And I know how people can be in this town and the way they'll go after others, as kind as we are. It is possible. And that's why I agree with the redaction from that perspective.
Right. Sounds like a no, but that was a burning desire that it had to get out. So thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, it's, this is the thing with history, y'all. Just even if we don't talk about it, it still exists. I think there is so much power in, you know, most of our, you know, many United States presidents owned other human beings. That's a fact. You know, the disproportionality in health outcomes and wealth and, you know, that's why I directed folks to the California Reparations Task Force because they get incredibly in the weeds in terms of the impacts of slavery and enslavement, in terms of how it shows up today with a lot of data and study behind it. I don't want to minimize that. But it is a fact that these things happen and that many, it was the culture at the time. Our history is difficult, but not acknowledging it doesn't make it less true. And I think that we are so much better as a community when we are honest about how we arrived here. And we are honest, because that's how easy it is, how easy we can be complicit in things that we maybe should not be. And it doesn't make people, you know, we are so much, it's so much more complex than folks are good or bad. It is, look at how easy it was for groups to be harmed or to be marginalized and how easy it was for everyone to just let it happen because it wasn't them or because they benefited. History repeats itself. I mean, this is the stuff that comes up in the, you know, the book bans or the harm, the targeted harm that's happening across this country and here in California to our LGBTQIA young folks across school districts. When we are not honest about our past and how we arrived here, it allows a door to be open for other things to happen or for that to repeat or for there to be a distancing or a flattening of that harm. That's why it's difficult in this moment to, you know, to just kind of skip over the lack of acknowledgement knowingly in, you know, what's today's date, on March 18th, 2024, in this moment to consciously skip over the naming and acknowledgement. That's a choice. That seems like it's not happening tonight. The only way we move forward is by knowing. But, you know, here we are. So that's my last.
Madam Mayor.
Absolutely.
Well, I hadn't really planned on commenting much on this because, you know, I grew up in a country in Europe. And when I read this report, and I actually have read it from start to beginning or beginning to end, and it was sort of interesting because this for me sounded exactly like the American history I was taught in my high school, in my home country. It was no difference. It described all those things that I already had learned. So for me, this was sort of a, it was a very relevant document. It described on a more local level exactly the American history with the bads and the goods and everything. And so for me, I thought it was very interesting and educating. But it didn't, you know, it was, this is what I was taught, exactly what was happening in the United States. And then on the issue with naming, I don't think that has a purpose because it's the events that is really showing what goes on. And naming is just issues that then, do we want them to be, you know, in the old days, you know, you put up names everywhere. We don't do that anymore because we think that it might have some unintended consequences. So I don't have a problem with that. But I really, you know, I really associated this report with exactly what I learned about what this country was about from beginning to where we are now. So I really appreciate that.
All right. So we've heard from colleagues. It looks like the motion that's on the table is to receive and refound this version of the report regarding our historical context study. And the next steps would be the REIT plan and whatever other Equity Subcommittee work is to come. Did I have that right from staff?
Yes.
And I have a motion by Councilmember Vera, a second by Vice Mayor O'Brien. Please All members have voted. The motion passes. Four ayes, one abstain from the mayor.
Hello again, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. I'm Dmitry, Director of Public Works. I'm joined here tonight by Matt Gaspar. He's our Civil Engineering Manager. Item A3 pertains to the request to pave the unpaved alleys citywide. This is a recurring request that staff has received. We've received numerous such requests over the years. And we currently have 2.4 miles of unpaved alleys. Unpaved alleys are alleyways that use compacted gravel and/or dirt as driving surface. Adjacent residents are regularly impacted by blowing dust and the uneven driving biking surfaces of these unpaved alleyways. The winter storms in '22, '23, as well as '23, '24 further drew attention to this issue as the unpaved alleys can flood during heavy rains and become inaccessible to vehicles and pedestrians. Staff requested that we, excuse me, council requested that we discuss this matter with a subcommittee. And the subcommittee would give recommendations. So staff requested that the subcommittee consider the following options and considerations regarding the unpaved alleyways in the city. The first one is, should the city continue the practice of requiring property owners to form an assessment district to fund the entire cost of alleyway paving? The second point we discussed with the subcommittee was, should the city instead offer a cost-share option in which the adjacent property owners would pay a percentage of the alley paving cost and the city would pay the remaining cost? The third point was, discuss other funding options and finally determine if unpaved alleys should be prioritized for new paving and which alleys should be prioritized. Two criterias were selected for this purpose. The first one is the volume of complaints and requests from the adjacent residents over many years. And the second criteria was public works, engineering, and maintenance operations staff's personal knowledge of alley dust levels due to drought conditions and the frequent flooding due to the storms. So we looked at the previous five years or so, and we got an inventory of the areas that tend to be problematic, where we get the most complaining and the most requests to pave these alleyways from our residents. The subcommittee recommended that the city council consider offering city general funds to be used to cover 10% of the cost to pave the adjacent unpaved alley. The city council would need to appropriate the funds with a four-fifth majority tonight, if you so choose. If appropriated, the city's share could be made available immediately if the adjacent property owners provide the remaining 90% of the required funds. If an assessment district were formed, bonds could be sold to generate the 90%, and property owners would pay their share through the property tax bill over a 10-year period at the current market interest rate. We've estimated to design and pave the top three alleys that, based on the two criterias I mentioned earlier, it would take, it would cost $2.8 million. And the engineers estimate to design and pave the entire 2.4 miles of the unpaved alleys is $11.5 million. And those three alleys that were selected based on the two criterias, criteria I mentioned earlier are the alley between Sawtell Boulevard and Globe. This one's estimated to cost $1 million to pave. The second one that was selected was the alley between Glenco Avenue and Wal Grove Avenue. This one is approximately half a million to pave. And the third alley was the alley between Sepulveda and Bentley Avenue. This one is approximately $1.3 million to pave. And with that, I will turn it over to Matt Gaspar to share more information and details.
Thank you, Dmitry. There were two subcommittee meetings I want to mention. There were two subcommittee meetings I wanted to mention. In the first meeting, the subcommittee instructed that we do come back with a list of recommendations, which Dmitry mentioned, the top three. And those, these alleys are the ones that I personally know, I've been with the city for 25 years. The first alley between Sawtelle Boulevard and Globe Avenue, this is north of Washington Place. That alley by far, I've received the most amount of complaints, and the other two as well. About, I do want to mention about eight years ago, we had a capital improvement project where we mixed a special product along with the soil in the alley to stiffen or to harden the soil. I forget the name of the, the product, but it did work for a couple of years, but then eventually it began to deteriorate and, and the product did not work after that. You know, people pull out of their garages or apartment buildings, power steering. You have trash trucks that drive up and down, of course, picking up trash that caused ruts in the alley. And then also, as mentioned, we've had two years now of winter storms, a lot of rain, which has caused a lot of flooding. So there's years of drought, a lot of dust, a lot of complaints, and then there's years of heavy rains and flooding. I also, and staff explored, are there any grants? Are there any other types of funding available to pave alleys other than city general funds? And unfortunately, there are none. We, I mean, I did a very thorough research. I know City Valley did get some monies donated by certain organizations as a pilot project about a year ago to see if that will kind of launch some more interest in greening alleys, but nothing since then. This is a nationwide problem. It's, unpaved alleys is all throughout the United States. It's a very, very common residential, especially residential areas. In Culver City, fortunately, most of the commercial alleys are, are paved. That was done during the days of redevelopment agency days, when redevelopment existed from 1971 till 2011, a lot of alleys were paved. And lastly, I want to mention, an update to this report is, we did pave for the first time an alley on, on Sepulveda Boulevard west, west of Sepulveda Boulevard from the 405 freeway on-ramp, off-ramp, southerly to approximately where Swiss Motors businesses, we paved that just recently with concrete. The southerly half from Swiss Motors all the way down to the end of the alley is in concrete. So we, we received complaints about how, why is that half alley in concrete, the other half is not paved? And the former director retired at that time, decided, let's go ahead and just include that alley in and have it on, especially it's a commercial alley, it doesn't have a lot of traffic, let's go ahead and have it on paved in concrete. So that, that concludes my additional comments to the report.
Mayor, if I could add one clarifying point, just to make it clear, so there's no question. There, the council would not be able to appropriate any funds this evening. That's not part of the staff report. That would be something that would come back with, with other council direction.
Thank you. Let's go ahead for questions. Councilmember Erickson.
Thank you. So Dmitry, how much currently is in our capital improvements budget for street resurfacing improvement?
On average, we get approximately $2 million a year for paving projects.
Is that enough?
We can always spend more and pave more if we are given more money.
Well, that didn't really answer the question. But anyway, so yeah, thank you, $2 million, and you were happy with that? Since I was on the mobility committee, I don't really have more questions because we had an extensive discussion at that time. Thank you.
Councilmember Fusa.
No questions, Mayor.
Councilmember Vera.
Hey, Mayor. Mr. Gaspar, first of all, thank you for over your, your 20 years, your over 20 years of service to the city. You've done an awesome job and hanging there, get another 20 years left out of you, I think, right? Just a quick question in terms of, of the ranking. You know, you mentioned before that the alley by Swiss Motors, one of the criteria we were using because it was a heavily, heavily trafficked alley. In terms of the ranking that was used for these three alleys, why wasn't the traffic volume part of the criteria used in determining what alleys were, like ranked one, two, and three, like you have three choices here? Is, is traffic volume something that we should incorporate in, in looking at alleys?
If I may jump in, no, the traffic volumes were not taken into consideration. However, it's a very valid point to take traffic volumes into consideration when we come up with this ranking.
Okay.
I should, I should mention that this alley that just got paved is a commercial alley.
Right.
These three are not commercial, they're just residential.
Yeah, but I think in moving forward, I mean, it doesn't make sense to do an alley, and I'm assuming the numbers on, on this chart here, like the two, I think it goes from two to 17, that's all, 17 is probably the worst shaped alley. Is that how the, the ranking, the pavement condition indexed? Does it go from one being best to 20 being worse?
Correct. It goes from zero to 100.
Okay.
The very same day you pave an alleyway or a roadway, it receives a ranking of 100, PCI, Pavement Condition Index.
Okay.
And then it starts to deteriorate from there.
All right. So yeah, what I think in, in moving forward, it doesn't make sense to hit an alley that, say, is ranked 17 and put that up on the list because it's the worst case scenario if it's, if it's not a heavily trafficked alley. So I think moving forward, I think that is a great criteria to fold into it. Other than that, I'll save no other, no other question. And then maybe like alleys around the school, school, school proximity, alleys would also be something I think should be folded into how we rank these alleys. No other questions, I'll save everything else for my comments. Thank you guys for your, your work. Thank you.
Vice Mayor O'Brien.
No questions.
Thank you for the presentation. Are there any public comments?
Yes, we have six speakers signed up, but three have ceded their time. So we have three actual speakers, Jay Garakashay, Mariano Andre, and Kareem Sally.
And actually, I believe it will be Jay Garakashay and then Mike Lupardia that will each have their three minutes. Is that right?
That's not what he said.
I'm Mariano.
I'm sorry?
I'm Mariano.
Yes, you've got three minutes as well.
Excellent, thank you.
I know, but that's, they put it there. They can't. Okay, so Jay, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, we should be able to do this in three minutes between Mike and I.
Okay.
Staff, I've been working with you guys, you know, through this, I appreciate the report and your guys' time that you guys have put into this and, you know, responding to the emails in a timely fashion. Good evening, Mayor, and City Councilmembers. I'm Jay Garakashay, and these are my neighbors on 3900 Block Globe, if you want to introduce yourselves.
Mike Lupardia, Globe Avenue.
Sean Gregory, Globe Avenue.
Jack May, Globe Avenue.
Tom Tany, Globe Avenue.
Thank you, guys.
I'm also a fellow, so I'm part of the gang.
Yeah, yeah, all right. So I, I want to thank you all for agendizing this item and working towards a solution of what to do with our unpaved alleys in Culver City. I'm here tonight with some of my neighbors from 3900 Globe and also representing the others that could not make it. In the interest of time, I want to speak about our alley and express how the 14 single-family homes feel about the staff report in front of you. Here are some of the options. The residents petitioned the city to pave the alley at the cost of the residents. So we have 14 adjacent properties on the Sawtelle side, which are all apartments. The owners do not reside in these units, therefore they can care less about the status of the alleys. The apartment owners are under the new rent control laws and cannot raise rents to absorb the additional cost of their property taxes, therefore they would never agree to this. There are 14 parcels on Globe Avenue. Six of those homes are owned by longtime residents who are now retired and living on fixed incomes. The cost of our alley is approximately $1 million to pave. That would be a tax increase of $3,600 per parcel of the, over the 10 years divided by the 18, or excuse me, the 28 total parcels on Sawtelle and Globe. Number two, the city residents split the costs with the city. Again, this will not work based on the same reasons above. Any increase to fixed income, single family homes this day and age is a burden, especially with retirees on our block. Let's say the city wants to show a little compassion or only pay 10%. Tax increase to the property owners is $3,200 a year. What if the city absorbs most of the cost? Let's say they, they pay 75%. It's still in a tax increase by us residents of $900 to our property taxes over 10 years. That could be manageable, manageable for some, but not for the 43% of the residents on Globe. Number three, the city picks up the total cost. And I'm only talking about Globe Avenue. For decades, the city comes through and scrapes the alley. They've used one of those huge pieces of machinery with a giant blade to smooth the alley, but now use one of their monster tractors. They also bring fresh dirt each year, which raises the, the height of the alley each time, not to mention the man hours involved. How much does this cost each year? How much does this cost over the past 30 or 40 years? And every year, we watch the city kick the can down the alley with no real solutions.
Each year after the first heavy rain, all of the dirt and hard work ends up in the middle of Washington Place and eventually into the ocean. Each year, the city's water vacuum truck has to come into the alley and pump out the remaining water. This is another cost. One year, the city had a great idea to use the glue type bonder on the dirt, and again, it all washed away and first rain, not to mention if there were any carcinogens that ended up in the homes for us to breathe as well. We conducted a small experiment and took some tools into the alley. Please take a look at these photos. We went to one of the low spots and used a pick and a shovel to dig down. We brought samples with us today of what we found, asphalt, where they believe that there is asphalt out, alley under all the dirt. We'd have to go back 50, 60, maybe 70 years to determine if the alley was once asphalt and if the city decided to put a Band-Aid on that issue and have ultimately created this problem, a problem that the property owners have, should not have to pay for. Couple more fun facts, the alley today sits anywhere from 12 to 18 inches higher than the adjacent properties. Some of the Sawtelle properties flooded in high rains and have to spend money to regrade their parking areas. What will this add weight due to our walls and fences? In another 10 to 20 years, our walls going to start to lean under the weight of the alley. Some here tonight will say, we don't have the money, let's grade it. Well, if this is the case, then grade it back to its original height and get rid of all the dirt you have brought on over the years. Again, this is a huge cost, a cost that property owners should not have to endure because a city official made a bad decision decades ago. Here's the best part, we don't even have the access to the alley from Globe. However, it is extreme nuisance with the dust, mud in the streets, and the ease of someone coming over our back walls. The staff report noted a key point that cannot be overlooked, public works, engineering and maintenance operations staff knowledge of all alley dust levels. The city should consider the health risks that this causes the residents. What is in that dust? What was in that glue? What type of health risk is the city putting us at? In closing, the residents of Globe Avenue understand that this is a huge ask, and we know that money doesn't grow on trees. Please do the right thing and vote to have the city repave the alley and come up with a comprehensive program to pave all the alleys over the next 10 years. Remember, this is the West Side of Los Angeles. We should vision ourselves after Beverly Hills, El Segundo, Manhattan Beach, and other prominent neighborhood cities. Thank you for your time.
Any questions? Thank you.
Our next speaker then is Mariano Andre.
And they do raise the rent every year, 3% mandatory, boom, 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 boom. It doesn't matter what the country does. Hi, how you doing? Thank you so much for your services. Thank you for having me and letting me speak about this situation. I moved into Culver City in 2021 because of the school, because my daughter wanted to take the advantage of being able to send her to this beautiful institution. They have extensively shown you what the problem is. I moved in 2021, and I've seen nothing but deterioration in that alley, and then I started to concern about health, number one. Right now, I'm not parking in my garage that I'm paying for because I am afraid that tomorrow morning I won't be able to get to my job because the conditions right now. Luckily, I learned how to drive in the farm, and my father used to take me to hard conditions so I could learn. So go drive in the mud, you know, figure it out, see what the car does, see, understand what's going on. I feel like I'm doing this every day to cut my house, and, and I'm not even parking in the, in the, in my garage anymore because I can't, I just, I'm not going to risk it. Just, you know, I moved here and I thought, this is it, I'm so happy, this is a great city, this is a fantastic place, this, it's just everything that I wanted. And it's a perfect mix between, you know, city and the American dream. It's like a little more city than American dream, and it's great. And it has a cost, awesome, and I can work for it, fantastic. But then I have to, you know, live in unhealthy conditions, especially when we were in quarantine, we were allowed to collect pools of water. Pools of water are not healthy, they attract pests in the city, not moving, not running water, you know how it is. And also, you know, a lot of my neighbors in the, in Sawtelle, they're not that careful with garbage. I've been asking for more garbage cans, and finally we got them, but still, you know, people are not. And if it's dirty, they, they go, well, if the city doesn't do it, why will I care? You know how people are, yeah? City's not taking care of this. I, I complained hard, and then one year, two years ago, they came and they dropped this, I don't know if it's what you mentioned, this substance that's somewhat plasticky, concretypaved, I mean, I don't know, it was weird, and they just dropped it right in front of my garage. And I'm like, oh, what is this? Well, this might help. And they left, and the next day it rained. And on the next day, I'm out with my car trying to flatten that thing because it just created even a worse condition, and it's worsened by now. So like they said, let's do it right, finally. Please, I beg you, we need it, I need to be able to come back to my garage. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kareem Sally. Kareem, I've unuted you, go ahead.
Thank you, good evening again. I, I will leave, I have no recommendation for or against it, but if the council decide to move forward with that project, I, I want to make sure that the new infrastructure will be extremely resisting to new vehicles that are, you know, electric vehicles nowadays are becoming heavier than ever. And so the new infrastructure needs to be stronger than it used to be. We need also to make sure that infrastructure will be able to cope with the rain. We have heavier rain, and we can expect more of that because of climate change. So let's make sure that we're not creating a new gutter that will spill that water away, but somehow maintain as much as we can inside the aquifer. And if we do need to find money for that infrastructure, we will need to take a serious look at the budget, and something's going to have to give. Because I believe that all residents deserve to have the ability to walk outside without, you know, disgusting boots or shoes after a rain, but that, that, that infrastructure come at a cost that is extremely high, and we need to all to pitch in into, into that infrastructure. That means that we're going to have to raise That means that we're gonna have to raise the, the part of the budget for public works, and some department will not have as much money for that because we want better roads for everyone. Thank you so much.
Thank you. That's the end of our speakers.
Thank you. We are discussing options to pave, unpave alleyways and providing direction, so let's go around. Councilmember Ericson.
Yeah, thank you. Since I was on the subcommittee, you, we came up with ten percent, and there's a lot of reason for that, but I want to hear my colleagues, and then we can have a discussion, maybe, and figure out what this really means.
Okay, councilmember Fuzan.
I was also on the subcommittee, and I, I would like to hear that as well, the other comments.
Councilmember Veen.
Well, being that neither one of the subcommittee members want to comment on this, I don't know, I'll, you know, I, I understand it's all about, at the end of the day, it's about, about money and how we're gonna move forward. I don't know that, as one of the speakers said, you know, a lot of folks are on a fixed income, they, they, across the board, I mean, the cost of living anymore is increasing almost on a daily basis, and how much more can our residents hope with in terms of cost? That being said, though, the city only has a certain amount of money for each project, each area, each sort of, yeah, project that we want to do. And I know there was a ninety, ten split here, and I, I believe that came from the subcommittee, where the residents are ninety percent, the city's on ten percent. I don't know if that's, I don't know if that's fair or equitable for, for anybody. It's a sort of a, a problem that the city had sort of let go for quite some time, and we've sort of been putting a Band-Aid on this problem that need, needs to be addressed. I don't know how much we're spending yearly to sort of, you know, get these alleys to, to limp along by, you know, resurfacing them, scraping them, adding more dirt, pumping them out. I'm sure, over the years, that costs a lot of, a lot of money for material and staff time. I don't know what, what I think, and, and the city can't afford to, to foot the bill for this whole thing either. I, I think moving forward may be a, a fair, equitable way that the city can look at it is maybe a fifty-fifty split, where the city comes up with fifty percent, the residents who levy comes up with fifty percent, and I, I'm sure each area will be different depending on the amount of residence, housing, and, and what kind of structures are adjacent to these alleyways, and, and then maybe, you know, changing the terms and going a little more than ten years, maybe fifteen, twenty years in terms of, of the payment plan, sort of speak, with a levy. Other than that, I don't know that there's a, a way forward where the city can just foot the bill on this. I, I'd like it, I'd like the city honestly to foot the bill on it. I, I think, you know, it's a shame that any city on the West Side is dealing with unpaved alleys, it's just, if, if the city could foot the bill, absolutely, we, we can't. So, I think a good compromise is fifty-fifty and maybe extending the period from ten years to fifteen, twenty years. Those are my comments, Mayor, thank you.
You, Vice Mayor O'Brien.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for the commenters, community members, I, I've received emails, council typically gets CC'd when the complaints come in, and, yeah, it's kind of, I mean, th, this is not the, the fault of this city or this city council, or, you know, it's a historical thing, right? And it's built up over the years, and we're faced with this deferred maintenance issue. Do we have a cot? Do we know what that dollar amount would, is to maintain our poorly maintained alleys?
We don't have an exact figure, but we can definitely come up with the best possible cost estimate of labor and material over the course of a year, but of course, as you can imagine, during the rainy season, maintenance staff goes out there way more often than the rest of the year when it's dry.
Yeah, and I know, I know that you're short-staffed.
We are.
I mean, that's incredible amount of work, and so, and, does anyone hear from vector control? You don't have to come up, Jay, but, you know, Eric, you know, diseases spread by mosquitoes, definite issue. I know some of the alleys on this list are in my neighborhood, and I, I see them sitting for weeks with puddles, I'm sure. Several generations of mosquitoes have been born during those weeks after a rainstorm. And I have to, Councilmember Barrera and I, Brown acted on this, and we're chatting about it, and likely the inspiration for my civic service, civil service, was when I was a child, my dad petitioned his neighborhood, our neighborhood, to have our gravel road paved, and it was split amongst all the property owners. I do have a question regarding the petition. Is it landowners or is it residents that have to sign that?
It's definitely landowners.
Can that, I, I question, can that be, city attorney, can that be amended, or is that a state law to, for a neighborhood? Is it fifty plus one in order to get it done? The petition, fifty percent plus one for the assessment?
That's typical, that's typical, yes, but we can, but we can mandate sixty percent or seventy percent.
So, then we could also change it, you know, from landowners to residents, or?
Vice Mayor, I'm not sure where, where it's policy and where it's law.
I believe this is policy, not law.
If I may.
It's not an assessment district, but I, I guess the question becomes, because we don't have a policy on this yet, because it doesn't exist, you're probably never going to get a hundred percent. So, at some point, if the council, if we move forward with this, we'll have to develop a policy by the council to what is the threshold, because there'll be some that were opposed that we're gonna have this, this, this cost is going to be imposed on them anyway.
Sure.
And I think it's a policy question, but the, but the deeper question is landowner versus resident.
Well, and it, if the cost is gonna be imposed, for example, as a, against the property, then it would absolutely have to be the property owner, you couldn't do that if it was the resident.
Okay, so by, by law, that would be the?
Well, yeah, if you're gonna assess some amount, I'm using assess and, and not the technical assessment district term, but just, if you're going to collect that money somehow through the tax rolls or through the property, then it would have to, I mean, you, you can't do that with the resident's permission, it would have to be with the property owner.
Okay, all right.
And I, and I, now that we're talking it through, you know, an assessment district is set up in law, and even those who do not vote for it, there's a law that says they're subject to it. If we're doing something other than an assessment district, like some city program, I would, we'd need to look at that a little closer, I think, to see if we could even impose that on ones that weren't in favor.
We, we might have to create an assessment district in order to be able to, I'm, I'm just thinking out loud.
Yeah, in order to be able to impose something on somebody who didn't vote, who didn't sign the petition.
Right, okay. You know, we talk about, you know, especially the mayor, you know, positions of power, and, and, you know, there's a lot of renters in that area, and I'm sure in others, that they don't have a voice in this, so if there is a way there to, you know, accommodate that lack of power, it would be great. I, I do think that it might better incentivize property owners to, to vote yes on something like this, if it was spread over a longer term. I believe my, when, when I was a child, my, our, our situation was at least twenty years, and it makes sense because it is a capital improvement project that probably has a lifetime of at least twenty years, and I think the average turnover, at least in California, of a property is about twelve years, so at least two owners would participate in the payment or the repayment schedule there. I, I would personally like to find out what, you know, what that, what that margin is, you know, if we, if we stretched it out to twenty years, or, I, I don't know, thirty years, and what that impact is on the city. But I, I think we need to be creative and, you know, also do a two-track system, you know, maybe we can't afford, as a city, to do, you know, all, obviously, we can't afford to do all two-point-four miles in, in one year, but maybe we can, you know, chip away at it slowly, where we pay a hundred percent of it based on this ranking criteria, but if someone wants to move to the front of the line, they can do this assessment district and, and partake in that, so we can, you know, we can move, I, I think we'll, we'll be able to overall move at a faster pace. And I, I think for the city, it makes sense fiscally in the long run because it's a lot less, it, it's not just the cost of the, of the, of the deferred maintenance, but it's also the cost of the, the, the human, you know, the, the capital of labor, you know, of, of, well, if we, if we've got our, our thin public work staff working on, you know, the Globe Alley, then they can't be working on, you know, the potholes on Washington, you know, or at least it's delayed, so it, it better, you know, it better allocates our resources that we need on a day-to-day basis, so I, I personally would like to look at a more equitable distribution of the cost, dual tracking, you know, try, try to knock off, you know, one or two or three alleys per year on our own dime, and then a longer term for repayment if we do, if there is an assessment district than just ten years. Thank you.
Thank you to community members who spoke, and stop again for the presentation. Hearing, Councilmember Barrera's interested in doing a cost share fifty-fifty, I'm hearing from the Vice Mayor, a couple of ideas, some spread over a longer term, perhaps twenty or thirty years, having some of the alley repavements, one, two, three, being something that we as a city sponsor and potentially the other tiers be shared or on the homeowners. And the subcommittee deferred at this time, and I guess we'll just go around again. In terms of this issue, and I recall when it came before us before, I think a lot about how we sorely need an equity framework, it's just, you know, things to respond to, you know, it's lovely hearing from neighbors, and we're grateful for involved neighbors, and, and keep it up, because that's, you know, that's what it's all about, but I'm not sure if that is how we should be determining how our resources should be allocated, there should be some sort of a independent assessment. Yes, it could be a factor, we want to make sure that it's folded in, but there has to be some sort of independent metric about how city, our shared community resources and budget will be allocated, so I just want to sort of lift that up and bring it into the room. Another thing I just want to lift up as well, you know, of course, the climate issue and, you know, car infrastructure is just so, 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 so expensive, disnaming, that, that is what we are potentially investing in today, and again, just how our complete dependence on cars costs us so much in so many ways, so just lifting that up as well. As it pertains to, and I, I think I recall when this came up before us, you know, sort of asking if we had made a sort of comparable investment in any, any other spaces, or thinking about multifamilies and sort of a function of equity or perhaps a lack thereof, but in terms of this, this particular issue, I don't see how, you know, you know, our budget, again, that we'll be having, beginning that conversation this week on Wednesday at three, invite folks to come on down for that, to hear sort of some of the, the shifts and, and concerns that we'll have as a city as it pertains to our budget, but I don't see how there is a path forward with a complete fund from the, from the city unless staff has, has some magic happening, or there's some windfall of Measure RE money coming down the pipeline that we don't know about, which would be wonderful. I don't know how we would, would invest there, so there has to be some sort of a district or assessment or a cost share. I wasn't incredibly in the weeds on this, but because folks, you know, would, would deeply benefit from this investment or this paving, it would definitely add to property values just objectively, as, you know, this is an infrastructure improvement, and these properties are worth quite a bit in our community, so it would, you know, it is, it is an investment, so I'm just sort of lifting that up, so there should be some sort of support, just taking that into account. I think the average home value in Culver City right now is like one-point-five for a single family, if I'm not mistaken, I think that was the latest average price, and I know that's not always reflective of where folks are, but just speaking about the value of our homes in the community at this time. So, there has to be some sort of shared option, I, I would probably be fine going with the suggestion from the subcommittee in terms of the ten-ninety and overtime at the market interest rates, it seems fair considering the infrastructure benefit to the homes, but let's go about, around, another time unless staff has something that they want to lift up. All right, let's go back around to Councilmember Barrera.
Yeah, thank you for, for comments and insights, so, you know, this is, it's sort of two sides of this, right? One, one is what we want to do and how much it's gonna cost, and the other side is where we're gonna get the money from, right? And, and the staff report indicates that we have currently four-point-one million in unassigned fund, and we know our budget is really challenged, we have increased our expenditures for, for homeless issues with regards to all our services that we are providing. We have, in a year, basically added another sixteen million is my guess, maybe more dollars, which is sort of just eating into our reserve, and, and this is really where we are, we are now getting into competing interests here, what, what is it, where we should put our money and, and at what time and so on. So, it is a challenge, it's not just to, to say, hey, let's do all the alleys over ten years, that, that adds million and a half or something per year, and we just heard we had two million dollars total currently, so we need then to find, because I'm, I'm sure we can't get away with less than two million to keep all other streets, right? So, we need to find that cash flow, and I know that staff already now has issues with balancing our budget. So, one way I was thinking about is that, you know, we have, we have the Reading property, and if we're ever gonna do something with that and we actually sell it, and that, that is currently not included in our actual available reserve, right? That is, exactly, so, that might be, we can, might, maybe say that, tie that somehow to that, that, you know, because that, that is not an ongoing thing, it's, it's, it's a property, it's infrastructure, so if we sell that, and we can allocate that revenue towards doing back alleys over time, right? I, I still think that the property owners should participate at some level. I, I agree with, with the comments about people on fixed income, you know, it doesn't really matter what your house is worth when your average social security today is about seven-hundred-fifty dollars a month, and then- And then, you know, you have to pay a little for Medicare. So you don't get $750, you get a little less. So I, I absolutely understand the challenges that is. And then, you know, we are increasing costs constantly. The, the school bond that passed is going to increase cost and social security doesn't go up. So people who are primarily living on social security will have a, a problem and, and to pay for it, right? Even if, you know, they're house-rich but cash-poor, that's really what happens for a lot of people. So I agree that, you know, it would be great to figure out a way to, to do this. And hearing from my colleagues that are willing to, you know, do a little more than, than what we on the subcommittee felt, I've been thinking about this. And so maybe some matching has to be there, I think. Because anyone that bought a house, they, they must have recognized that there was a back alley behind their house, right? And maybe that affected the, the property price when they bought it. And so, and then the city has not done their job in maintaining these back alleys to the level that maybe we should, right? Clearly so when it floods. And I think that, that is an issue that's on us. I know we maintain them once a year. Maybe we need to, we, we getting these heavy rains and so on, maybe we need to do this twice a year to, to regrade them and, and make them work until we can do a permanent solution. Because it's not fair to the homeowners to get water flooding into their garage and their properties. And I know Public Works is out very, very quick with a pump truck and, and try to pump away, but it's, happens on a lot of alleys at the same time. So it's, it's a challenge, right? So, so we have some, some responsibility to fix the problem in short run and then figuring out how to fix this in the long run. And so I don't know what my colleagues think about that. But that property, you know, it was assessed at 3.5 million. I don't know what it can be assessed for, if we decided to sell it for some purpose. But that, that will bring in some money to, to help with getting some of the alleys done and then having, I think there should be at least some participation, if that's 10, 15% or something. But I think that the property owners should participate in this because it is an improvement for their property, clearly. So, no, that's another idea. Maybe colleagues have other ideas how to finance this. Because I think that we all think it should be done, right? So the question is how and how much we put in and where we find the money that we're going to put in. Any thoughts, anyone?
Thank you so much, Councilmember Erickson. Councilmember Puzza.
Thanks, Mayor. I agree with Councilmember Erickson. There's two issues, what we want to do and our budget. And we have many constraints with our budget. I'm very concerned about that. We are spending a lot on our homeless services. That's our, undoubtedly our priority. And we, our city has been talking about that for years. It's definitely, we're putting our money where our mouth is. So we have to look at where else we're going to cut. As far as the Reading property, you know, we agree that that would be a community decision as to the future of that property. So, you know, if, that's something that I think we should let the community decide what they want to do with that. I am open to, I know I was on the subcommittee, so the Councilmember Erickson and I made the recommendation, but I am open to reassessing the criteria for priority, the priority of which alleyways to be paved. I'm open to adjusting the 10, the 10%. And I, if it's possible to making it a longer term, 20 to 30 years, to help ease that monthly payment. And then definitely talking about a long-term, determining a long-term decision. And maybe that's something we decide after the budget discussions. But, I mean, we just have to make tough decisions. So this is going to, this might have to be one of those tough decisions. And so that's where I'm landing on this. Thank you, Mayor.
Can I ask, so should we sort of put this in the, in the work plan discussion? Is that where we're going with this? Madam Mayor, have you sense for where the council is?
Thank you, Councilmember Erickson. Earring fell down. So what I am hearing, I heard from Councilmember Puzza just then, he's open to, I appreciate him lifting up the community process for the Reading property. I think that's really important and we did make that commitment. So I wouldn't want to move, I wouldn't want to shift that commitment, but look forward to learning and going with community in terms of the next steps for that property. I heard that he was interested in maybe visiting that 10% and extending the repayment to 20 to 30 years, similar to Vice Mayor O'Brien. I haven't heard much more consensus as it pertains to next steps based on the notes that I've taken based on colleagues' feedback so far. I'm generally okay with that as well. Staff, do you think that this, I know we haven't had, had complete consensus at this time, but is this something that could be factored in work planning conversations? As I know it's this week, so you might not have enough time to amend or modify in terms of, I see the city manager looks pained. Are you all right?
Well, I'm just thinking, I'm not sure we at a staff level are going to know anymore from the work plans. I think we need to see the budget. I mean, we need to see what the competing interests are. I, I, and I'm thinking the other factor here is that the amount that the city will be spending each year will probably be predicated on decisions you make regarding the amount that, participation that you're going to require. The, the, that's going to dictate the pace of this to some degree. If, if you, the more ownerage you make, make it on the property owner, that's going to slow the pace of this. Just, so there, it's, it's hard to evaluate. It's hard to know what the cost is going to be to the city on an annual basis. If, if, if we have to, it's going to, it probably will be dictated by the, the rapidity with which we get property owner participation agreements and assessment districts set up. Now, now, let's say we get a, a number of them set up, then, then it may then shift to how much we have available each year. But I don't think, we're not going to have any money extra available for this without even starting the budget process. I just already know. My guess is, any, any funding we put towards this is either going to come out of reserves or it means some other capital improvement we're not going to do, I think.
Can I ask one question?
Sure.
Quick question, Dimitri. Do, do we get grants for just regular street paving?
Yes, we do.
So as those come in, could we re-allocate, you know, you know what I'm saying?
Well, we don't get one-time grants. We, do we, don't, most of our street-
Yeah, for example, there's the SB1 funding, which is an annual thing.
But that's annual, right?
It's annual, yes. And then-
I mean, there's, we, we have, we get, some of our street paving is funded by state sources.
That's the one, that's-
It's predictive?
State Bill Number 1.
Yeah, but it's, but, but that comes, a certain amount comes every year, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
We don't get, we don't apply for one-time grants that we get for street funding. We, we have other sources that come from other levels of government.
And that amount is included in the 2 million I mentioned earlier.
So we, we don't, or it's, or it's rare that we get a surprise grant to pay for-
No, no.
Okay.
No, it's kind of a all-built-in routine-
Correct.
Okay.
Annual funding.
There, there is a Cal recycle grant of like $35,000.
Very small amount.
Small amount that John just signed, I think, today.
Correct.
Yeah, I finally got to that, yeah.
And, and I'm just, I'm sure you guys are applying for all this, but the, what do we call it, the Inflation Reduction Act funding that's out there for, you know, public infrastructure and we're, we're always applying for those.
We do. Yes, we do.
Okay. Okay, I, I was just thinking if there were, on random years, we get money to, to pave streets, then we take what we have already allocated and put that to, to alleys. But it didn't sound like that happens.
Funding for this is going to, is going to either come out of reserves or compete with other capital expenditures. It's simply put-
Yes, that is the case.
Understood.
May I ask a quick question?
Sure.
So in, it sounds like before we look at the budget, there's really not a whole lot that we can do. And then even looking at the budget, there's still not a whole lot we can do initially, correct?
Well, I, I mean, I, I sense that there's council direction to do something at this point and to change the status quo. That's what I'm sensing. I think the key decision for the council is going to be the cost share. And, and it may be, you don't, maybe you don't want to make that decision tonight. Maybe you want to wait and see what the fiscal picture looks like. I, I don't know. I'm just thinking out loud here.
What are the likelihoods? I mean, per staff's recommendation about the three alleyways that they recommend to prioritize, is there money in the budget? I know there's no money in the budget, but to, to cover these three alleys and then?
Without increasing the annual paving budget, it simply means other streets will not get paved in order for us to pave these alleys.
Right. And then, in, in your opinion, Dimitri, well, no, let me rephrase it. In terms of equability towards the residents, I, I think personally 90/10 is putting too much on, on the residents, where the residents have to come up with 90% of, of the bill. And as Councilmember Erickson said, you know, they're house-rich but cash-poor. And that's so true across the board on, on multiple levels. But would 50/50 split be something that, if we deem that was the consensus, something that is a little more workable for both, I mean, the community members more so than, than the city, obviously it's more money on the city, but is that something that might be viable?
If there are three votes on the council for it, we'll, we'll, we'll work with it if that's, if that's the direction.
But the best, best way, maybe wait till the budget and see what we have working with?
Well, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to think out loud as we go through this. The ultimate constraint is how much money we have available, regardless of, even if we have 10 alleys that want, have, have agreed and we have 10 lined up, we might only have funding to do one or two. I, I don't know. And we won't know how much we have available until we go through the budget process. And, and it probably, my guess is we won't have any available. And then it might be a decision for the council, what capital project do you not want to do so we can fund, do this alley? Or do you want to spend money out of reserves to do this alley? I, I don't think there's any magic here. It's, you know, we don't have extra pot of money somewhere that we're not using.
Hiding away, huh?
No.
All right, thank you.
May I ask two more follow-up questions? So when you're not repaving and you're just patching, does that come out of the, the, your annual paving budget or is that-
No, that comes out of the maintenance operations budget.
And I, I'm sorry, how much is that, that you, for paving, do you have per year? 2.8?
On, on average, we spend $2 million a year.
$2 million a year. Well, I would say that if we do pave alleys because of our budget constraints, it comes out of street, that street paving allocation. And as, as bad as some potholes are on some streets or, or the overall quality of those streets can get, I mean, even my street, I, you know, there's, I wish it could get repaved, but I know that I would rather if one of these alleys get paved personally and then just, you know, patch, patch a couple of potholes on my, on my block personally. That's, that would be my, if there's a direction to do this, that it definitely, or maybe that's already baked into what this would be. I, I don't, I don't want to go into reserves anymore personally. So it would, if we do, in this participatory process with, with the residents and we do pave an alley, that money is coming out of that roughly $2 million a year for paving streets.
You, you won't be able to make this decision until you're looking at the entire budget. I'm just sitting here thinking out loud. You, you can't, we can't guess at this point or know what the, what, what the council will want to spend on this. It's, it's, would have to be some, a decision you make in the budget process itself.
So a, a question, my colleagues, is that for staff to prep something when we get into the budget, so are we willing to give the direction about the split, 50/50 or some other split? Because that might help staff to sort of put together what, what money would be needed from, from, from the general fund aspect. So I don't know if, you know, Councilmember Vera suggested 50/50, that might not trigger any alley property owner to, to support that, but then we know that. Or it might. And then we start there.
Right.
But for staff, not having that makes it harder for them to sort of make those suggestions in their proposal to the city manager and then to us, right? I'm just wondering.
Would that, would they help if we're staff, if we get consensus for 50? I don't even know if I have consensus up here for 50/50.
I, Mayor, I, I would be in favor of that along with an extended term for repayment for them. And it goes, you know, the beauty of that is that it does, it does create a rank based on which, which neighborhood wants to assess themselves. So they, they're prioritized by, by the order in which they, they get the signatures. And then, once that paving line item is depleted, then we're done for the year. And if there's room left over, then we pave streets with that.
So I just want to lift up here, seems like there's consensus for 50/50 and staff will be looking to roll that into our budget. I suppose I've heard three comments in, in regards to that. My, my only concern with sort of, you know, the first come, first serves and when the money is depleted, is depleted. It almost perpetuates, perpetuates a system of inequity because some, some neighbors who have access or might be able to have access to more resources, might be able to, to galvanize each other more quickly. Maybe other neighbors who are not as well-resourced might not be able to move as quickly. So, you know, I, I have a little bit of, you know, that, that is not an equitable system. It is one, and it's fine if the, the city wants to move in that direction. But just to be clear, that will definitely bias residents who can move quickly, who have access to time and who can organize their neighbors quickly and have, you know, and can do that. But if that's the direction that council wants to move in, and that is the direction. I am just really concerned about, in terms of capital improvements and the many things that are on- and the many things that are on the list of, of items that are, that we need improvement from our community resources. I'm concerned about the level of impact in terms of our wider community that the repaving of these alleys would have in our wider community. It seems like the impact is, is very limited. And I'm not saying that it's not important. It certainly, you know, paving of alleys, it seems like something that should be done. Again, the reason why we're talking about it is, is, is not, the origin is not ours, the five of us sitting here. But I am just really deeply concerned about the level of impact of this volume of resources, of city funding. And it, that also feels, something is just not passing the, the gut check there in terms of community resources being spent in that way. But I just wanted to lift that up. It seems like there is consensus for a 50-50 split and for that to be something that staff is moving forward on into the budget conversations. I'm just checking to make sure that y'all have city manager notepad.
Mayor, it's not clear to me, there are three votes for the 50-50.
I heard Councilmember Vera, I heard Vice Mayor O'Brien and Councilmember Erickson. Is that incorrect?
That was, okay, that wasn't clear to me. There's some reason I was asking.
I try to, try to keep the notes up here.
Okay.
I don't, I don't know-
It was just to start with 50-50 as a basis for the conversation?
I think, I think it's, we need to give staff something to work on, to bring to us. And then, and I think there, you know, a 20-year term is probably more appropriate as it is an infrastructure investment. And then I wonder if, if the mayor have a suggestion for what an equitable distribution, how that would look like? That would be, you know, also maybe valuable to have that on the table when we get there.
Well, I would love to continue to have that conversation, Councilmember Erickson. It is something that would take a lot of investment. It's something we've been lifting up on the equity subcommittee. But there is a framework that should be developed as it pertains to who receives resources, how we allocate resources, the level of our impact. And it is something that I am deeply committed to working in partnership with staff to achieve. Is there a magical checklist that I have in my notes right now? No. But it is something that should be created and crafted in conjunction with community staff. Hopefully, there could be consensus up here. But there needs to be, I mean, you heard from my comments how easy it would be for, you know, a really motivated, resource neighborhood to quickly, you know, receive this benefit because they could quickly match. So it just requires us getting a little creative and making sure that everyone has an opportunity to be in partnership with the city. And if we're saying this is a concern, we want to make sure that, you know, not just some folks are, are receiving the benefit. So we want to be fair and make sure that we are being conscious about the impact of our decisions. City manager notepad.
Yeah, Mayor, I had one more thought I wanted to share. And that is that even if the council adopts a policy, it doesn't commit the council to spending any money on an alley in any particular year. If, if you, if the council doesn't vote to appropriate the funds, you don't spend, you know, an alley doesn't get paid. So you're not, we're not, you're not committing yourself to spend all this money like that. I mean, you still control the decision.
Thank you for lifting that up, City Manager Akbar. Are there any other comments from colleagues as it pertains to this matter? Staff, do y'all need any other clarity or anything to move forward this evening?
No, thank you.
Do you need? No motion is needed, direction is provided. Wonderful. Just taking a pause, make sure everybody's good. Wonderful. Okay, thank you so much. Thank you to the community. So we are on to public comment items now on the agenda. Are there any remaining comments, City Clerk? Okay, thank you for that. I know that city staff sent me some items to adjourn with, but I want to make sure to not skip over member requests to agendize future items.
I have an item.
Councilmember Puzo.
Thank you. It's great that the city, you know, put an end to the oil field and the 10% of the oil field that's in Culver City. In 2022, the state legislature passed SB 1137, so that establish health and safety setbacks. So for any new or modified oil and gas wells within 3,200 feet of homes, schools, daycare centers, parks, healthcare facilities and businesses, there would be these setbacks. There is an initiative referendum to overturn this. So I'm wondering if I can get three nodding heads to support, to block the, block this referendum to overturn the state bill.
I'm seeing nodding heads from Vice Mayor O'Brien, Councilmember Vera and Councilmember Puzo.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'll just make one comment on that. The, I believe we can have assistant to the city manager, Ms. Wolfberg, look at it. But I think that this might fall under the legislative policy and platform, which could be handled administratively without having to come back to city council. But we'll, we'll double check on that.
Okay, I shared it with staff.
Oh, okay.
And they said to do it this way, but-
Oh, okay.
Happy to send it. I didn't go through Jesse, so I will send it to him.
You talked to Shelley?
Yeah.
No, she's the right person.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah. Oh, okay, I didn't realize that then. Never mind.
Yep, thank you.
Councilmember Vera, any items?
No, Mayor, thank you.
Councilmember Erickson, any items? Vice Mayor O'Brien?
No, thank you.
Okay, sounds good. I just wanted to check back in on the equal pay pledge from the California Commission on the Status of Women and Girls. They've been, I asked about it in the last meeting, but we weren't sure how it would go procedurally. If that was something that could be done ministerially, I sent it to, I think, Jesse and maybe Shelley on the Tuesday after the last meeting. Just want to see if that needs to be agendized, the supported equal pay pledge. I think Santa Barbara, Santa Monica, the county is voting on it tomorrow to support equal pay, equal pay pledge is not binding. They're not seeking, you know, any, but just a commitment from the city. So they're looking for support from cities and counties.
I know they're looking, looking at it because I, I saw some communications between Mr. Mays and Ms. Wolfberg. So I think, I know they're looking into what needs to happen next.
Okay, great, okay, great. I just wanted to also amplify the no kid hungry request. I think, I forget the woman's name who made a request for support. I think the event was in May, the annual event at Media Park. Is there support to hear that request? I'm not familiar with the representative, but I am familiar with the event.
Mayor, we, I received an email today from Edgar Valera to, for the special events subcommittee to meet about it. So we just have to respond to that.
Okay, sounds good. I know that staff also reached out to me to ensure that we could fold the June, I could receive nodding heads to fold the Juneteenth celebration in with a conversation about, I think, fireworks and fireworks in the MLK Committee. I think they're coming back on April the 8th. Elaine asked if I could get consent from colleagues to have that come back in the same discussion. Got it, right?
I'm sorry. Are those two separate issues that you want to be brought back on the same date?
It's all, it's all related.
Yeah, that's, Elaine asked if I could seek nodding heads for it to come back together on the, the 8th because it's related somehow, but it wasn't initially agendized collectively.
It's because there's no, there's, right now, there's no funding in the budget for Juneteenth. And so when the council's making these other funding decisions, we're thinking it's wise for them to take that into consideration at the same time.
Got it. And I'll make sure it's all on the 8th. Yeah. Okay, and I'm sorry, were there three nodding heads for Taste of the Nation? One, two?
So it's two separate ones?
The Taste of the Nation is something that the subcommittee-
Yeah, it's coming to the subcommittee. We're going to meet on that.
Vice Mayor's got that one under control.
Will there be time to come back?
That's my question.
Oh.
That's what I'm wondering.
Oh, oh, when's Taste of the Nation?
May-
May 4th, she said.
And I don't know when they need an answer.
Oh, it's March, yeah, might need to.
Well, I guess we should agenda, it's to agendize it, right?
It wouldn't hurt if you, if you gave us three nodding heads as, for cover.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you.
Okay.
I see three nodding heads.
Okay, so just checking, every, you got everything, City Clerk?
Yes.
Wonderful, thank you so much. Any other items from members? Okay, I have two requests from staff and memory, so I'm just going to, oh, I'm just going to read them. One, memory of former state assemblyman and former state Senator Alan G. Sederoy, I hope I'm not saying the name incorrectly, who passed away on March 16th at age 93. The senator represented the West Side for many years and was very active in promoting consumer protection measures while in office. He was one of the creators of the Coastal Commission and was a strong supporter of the Santa Monica Mountains National Recreation Area along with his good friend and colleague Anthony C. Billiansen. Am I saying that right as well? When, when he retired from the Senate in 1982, the California Legislature honored him by naming a state beach in Tomales Bay State Park and Marine County after him. So there's a list, he's supported the American Civil Liberties Union Foundation, the Venice Family Clinic, supported Homeless and Services, et cetera. So we want to adjourn in his memory as well as, let's see, let's see, sorry, there are a lot of emails here. And we also want to lift up and request a, adjournment in memory for Aaron Meese White Sharon's husband, OJ Sharon, who passed away last month. His memorial service was held last week. We want to lift up her and her family, as well as the senator's family, in this time of mourning. Is there a motion and a second for those two requests? I think I have everyone.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor O'Brien, a second by Councilmember Puzo, to adjourn in their memory. Please vote. All members have voted, the time is 10:30, and we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.